If everybody could take a seat, please. If everybody could take a seat, please. The constable has confirmed that the warrant for this annual town meeting has been properly posted, and the town clerk has informed me that there is a quorum present. The 2019 annual town meeting of the Town of Hamilton is now open. Thank you all for coming. My name is Jeff Meelik, I'm the town moderator, and I welcome you all to the April 6, 2019 annual town meeting. We'll start, as we always do, with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic, the which stands one nation, under God, indivisible.
Thank you. There are a number of people who have worked very hard and volunteered their time today to make this day possible. And particularly, we have some people who have worked here in the physical plant to set up the microphones and the tables and chairs and so forth. And they're working at a disadvantage today because they don't have as many students as they usually do because they had the prom last night. But I would like to thank everybody here who was out in front, helped, and is doing the videotaping and so forth. I would ask and beg all of you at the end -- yes, that's worth it. Thank you. I would ask that at the end of the meeting, you please, please, take all of your papers, trash, and anything like that with you so that the people here, who are in short staff in particular, don't have to pick it up. I'd like to start by recognizing Steve Ozerowski.
Hi, Steve Ozerowski, Willow Street. Thank you all for coming, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm here because for the last eighteen years I've been on the Hamilton Board of Assessors, and for most of that time, the chairman has been a guy named Buddy Campbell. And he's decided to retire, and he did not want to go out with anyone saying anything but -- sorry, dude. If you know Buddy, then I don't have to say that much. He's a great guy, he's been a wonderful person to work with, it's been a privilege. And since he's a modest person, I don't want to mention too much about him. You know, I'm not going to say anything about how he was born in Wenham and moved to Hamilton at a very young age. Fortunately, by moving to Hamilton, he was able to outgrow that unfortunate beginning. And he's lived in Hamilton for something like eighty years. He was on the undefeated Hamilton football team, nineteen forty-seven and nineteen forty-eight, third from the right, I believe, at the bottom. He graduated from BU, he served the town as a member of the Finance Committee for a number of years. He's been on the soccer board for twenty-five years, I'm sorry, the Hamilton Board of Assessors, for twenty-five years. He was a person who helped start youth soccer. He taught math for thirty-eight years, the majority of which was in Hamilton, head of the department. He is, you know, he's probably as well-known as anyone in this community. If there was ever a perfect nickname, Buddy, that describes him perfectly. He has three children, six grandchildren, and he will be missed. And I thank you for the opportunity to not say anything about him.
I'd like to announce that there's a bake sale out in the lobby area, the proceeds of which are going to benefit a party for people who attend the prom, to give them a safe place to go after the prom. So if you'd like to stock up on sweets and support that, please do so after the meeting. I'd like to start with a few general reminders. First, if you're a registered voter in Hamilton, you should have picked up a voter card. It looks like this, in the table in the front. If you haven't wished to vote, I ask you to go get one now. You'll need to raise the card to cast your vote on the issues we decide here today. We welcome non-voters to the town meeting, but do ask that you sit in the visit areas down front, here on the right, or back there on the left, so it's easier to determine who's voting and who's not. Registered voters may also sit in the overflow room, which is in the cafeteria. Bill Bowler has graciously agreed to be my special town moderator there for the fourth time, and I really appreciate it. That's there for people who have children and want to come here and participate in town government and couldn't come without it. I know that it does slow things down from time to time as I go between the two rooms, but I've erred on the side of including those people at town meeting rather than excluding them. Now, believe it or not, my most difficult job as town moderator is to find tellers. I need tellers who would come down here and count votes when we made votes. So right now, I'd actually like six of them. So if there are at least six people here who would kindly volunteer to serve as a teller, would you kindly come down front and volunteer your services? Are there people out there who are willing to do that? Thank you, thank you. Thank you. We got three. It's fun, I mean, it's really fun, I gotta tell you. The pay is great, it's totally volunteer. We got another, alright. Do I hear -- I feel like an auctioneer. I've got four, do I hear five? Do I hear five? We got four, we got five. Okay, alright, we got five, we have a sixth. We have a sixth, one more. Just one, see, this is why it's so difficult. Alright, we're gonna go with what we've got then, alright, so five. Come on up here.
Where am I counting?
And the right is as you look this way.
Right is not included, Tom? Right is just there, four.
Look at your thing, it says right, look at, right here.
Do I do the center, do I count it all the way across?
So you're the center?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's the center here. And the right is the right side over there, and the front.
And we're double counting each other. So I count row one through twenty-four.
You know, Jeff said he's not making any motions. Jeff's not making a motion, so. Right.
Yeah, yes, no motion, we got one.
Center, who else is, oh. Who else is center? Andrea's asking. Are you centered, sir?
Yeah.
He is center. Do we double count, so he counts the same row? We both count it and make sure. So in this row, one. Standing out, like, four on the one, whatever, four. Yeah, you're, and you have to get four in.
Alright, thank you, I appreciate it. I'd like to introduce the people who are sitting up in front of the stage, so you know who they are. Donna Brewer, our town council, is sitting to my left, with Andrea Delarosa, who's the town clerk. Down front are Joe Demelowitz, our town manager, Sean Farrell, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Scott Mattern, Jeff Hubbard, and Bill Olson on the Board of Selectmen, Allison Jensen, the other member of the Board of Selectmen is down here in front. And on FinCom, we've got Phil Sterns, Nick Tenson, Darcy Dale, John Poulidge, and David Wanger, and Marisa Batista, who is our finance director. Now, I've asked some non-resident town officials and those assisting the Selectmen or Finance Committee to be here so they can be available to answer questions. Members of the press and video crew have also been allowed to be present. We'll begin with brief reports by Sean Farrell, Joe Demelowitz, and Phil Sterns, and then we'll review some rules to continue the town meeting. So, Mr. Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the annual town meeting. First, I'd like to say thank you to all the people involved who helped put this meeting together, and thank you to all the boards and committees who volunteer their time and effort every day. All your hard work is truly appreciated. Town meeting is one of the purest forms of democracy and your opportunity to guide the future of Hamilton. I appreciate all of you taking the time of your day to come here today. Before we get to the warrant, I just wanted to take a moment to share with you some of the updates of business in town from our fall town meeting. Fiscally, we are in great shape and our reserves are strong. I'm happy to say the Town of Hamilton has maintained standard and porous AAA bond rating, its highest rating, noting strong budgetary flexibility, strong liquidity, and strong financial management. The town also received a clean bill of health through its annual financial audit process. We are proud of our bond rating and successful audits. Combined, they demonstrate good working financial controls and management. We continue to maintain our three-year forecast and our five-year capital plan. And in the next handful of months, we'll be reorganizing the staff in the Finance Department and are looking forward to new efficiencies it will bring. The town secured a community compact grant from the state to review and work on our financial policies. We're working through them now, and will continue to do so over the next few months. We also have just recently established a capital committee that will work hard to help prioritize the town's capital needs and timing of these asks. We are hopeful that the Town of Wenham and the Regional School Committee will work with us to help coordinate, will help coordinate these capital needs from the three entities. When we work together, we all benefit. In our tax collector's office, Cheryl Booth will be retiring in June after many, many years of service and starting another chapter in her life, and we wish her the best. We've recently begun the process of starting a municipal vulnerability preparedness program to assess preparedness to climate change over the next seventy years. Participation in this program opens up opportunities to get state grants and to improve our infrastructure to combat climate change and to help us be prepared for the future. Our joint recreation department has had another great year and continues to offer great programming to our residents. In Patton Park, the gazebo has been updated, the tank has had a much-needed facelift and was rededicated on Veterans Day, and the two Patton Park cannons have been refurbished with CPC funding and look great. Weaver Pond at Patton Park will also have the invasive species removed through CPC grant as well, starting in the next few weeks. The planning board has started to work on the housing section of the master plan and has had several public forums, as well as a survey, to gain insight on what the town would like to see for the future of housing in Hamilton. There will be another housing public forum on April twenty-ninth at the library. The Town and Habitat Humanity partnered together to build two affordable units on Asbury Street, and they have been completed and are occupied. The Canterbury Brook development, approved by the planning board over a process of several years, has begun construction and will be adding twenty-three new homes to Hamilton and will most likely become our largest source of real estate tax. A judgment in the case of Varsity Wireless versus the Town of Hamilton Planning Board has occurred just recently. This case was over denial of a special permit by the planning board to place a cell phone tower behind town hall. The site was approved by previous town meeting for such a use. Three planning board members did not agree with its placement. The case lingered on far longer than expected, and we're pleased that the judge has made his conclusion. The town's motion to strike was allowed. The judge ruled that the terms of the agreement to judgment will be entered, and a permit will be issued to build the tower. The issuance of the permit will address the current wireless communications coverage gap in Hamilton and therefore lead to improved wireless service for the town's citizens. The town will also receive financial benefits, lease payments, co-location fees, and utility payments as a result of issuance of the permit. In addition, the agreement saves the town from future costs of litigation. The citizens of the town will benefit from the town's ability to use those funds for other public purposes. Moreover, the agreement for judgment includes multiple concessions by Varsity that will benefit the town, including restriction on site clearing, generator testing and lighting, and signage associated with the facility. You may recall, at last annual town meeting, an advisory vote was given to make the historic curatorship program at Bradley Palmer State Park, 550 Highland Street, tax exempt. The Board of Selectmen has worked with the Kaminski's and the state to make this so. We have currently submitted a Home Rule Special Act releasing the property from taxation as long as it is in the curatorship. We are hopeful that it will be approved. The owner of 133 Essex Street has closed sections of the Chabaco Woods Trails that go through that property, and the town is weighing its options to keep the trails open that have been used by generations for public hiking, horseback riding, and other passive recreational use continually for more than twenty years. We feel we have a strong case to keep the trails open for citizens to enjoy. We've had a great group of citizens come forward to help us with gathering data for our case, and I want to thank them now for all the effort they've put in to keep the trails open. Green Meadows Farm has been approved for an indoor medical marijuana farm on the property, and site work has begun. A host community agreement was signed with the Green Meadow Farm and the town, and as part of that impact fee associated with the project, we will also gain funds to pay for a school resource officer who will be hired this summer. Our town hall building committee has been busy and has hired an owners' project manager and has begun the process of looking into rehab of our town hall. Designs and cost estimates have been submitted to the committee just recently, and a presentation will be given to the community today to help guide the much-needed improvements at our town hall. Our water treatment plant has had updates made to it so that we can treat the water more efficiently and operate it as it was originally designed. Today, there's a warrant article for more capital to improve the water treatment plant further by reducing the organic compounds in the water by pre-treating it. The monies would go to building an addition onto the current facility. The water main replacement project that was voted over several town meetings is going well and face rates complete with over twenty-two thousand feet of water pipe replaced so far. We've been working with our state representatives as well to address the amount of power outages in Hamilton and have had several productive meetings with National Grid on the solutions. As a result, National Grid has done extensive tree trimming in town to help mitigate the outages and from tree damage. National Grid is now doing monthly patrols of the entire feeder, and will do an annual infrared scan of the supply line. They will also install new equipment on Woodbury Street and Essex Street to help with power supply to that section of town. We are glad to welcome Kaylee Parr to our staff as the Patent Homestead Director. She has been key to developing a business plan with our town manager for the homestead, and we look forward to the homestead being used to its fullest potential for our citizens. One new addition to the homestead is that it is now home to the Hamilton Historical Society. They're no longer in the basement of town hall, which I'm sure they're all very happy about. This year, we participated in the Rees Across America on Veterans Day. Through private donations and monies from the cemetery fund, we were able to place over seven hundred Rees on veterans' graves. Also, our condolences go out to the Heath family for the recent passing of Tony Heath. He was one of our beloved members of the American Legion Post 194. He will be missed. The town will be offering discounted rain barrels again for purchase in the next few weeks to help conserve water this summer. Please check the town website over the next few days for more information. At this time, I'd like to recognize that this is Scott Mattern and Allison Jenkins' last town meeting as select persons, and I wanted to thank them all for all they've contributed over their terms in office. I also encourage you all to come out and vote in the upcoming elections on Thursday. As you've just heard, we've got a lot going on. I try to keep it brief, but I never am, part of my fault. There are many important issues being brought to us to vote today. We're here because we care about the future of Hamilton. Please be respectful of your neighbors and give them the chance to speak if they so choose. Thank you.
I now recognize Joe Demelowitz, our town manager.
Good morning, and thank you for letting me speak. I promise I'll be brief, I only have this little index card. I had actually prepared some remarks, and then as I was looking at them again, I thought they were a little pretentious, so I decided to shelve them and just shoot from the hip. In the seven months or so I've been here, I've got to meet a lot of the folks in this room, and it's been great meeting you, and I hope I get to meet the rest of you over the next months and years. The thing, the conversation that I keep having with people here in Hamilton is how much they want to preserve and protect Hamilton, the Hamilton they love. And that's great, because that's why I wanted to come here, is I wanted to help preserve and protect a community like this. But I think it's important to recognize that the conversation, even though it's got the same theme, has not been the same conversation any two times. Everybody in this room has something different about Hamilton that they love. Everybody in this room advocates for those things. It's our job here today to try to figure out a way to get all of that stuff brought forward as much as possible. There's gonna be need to do compromise, there's gonna be need to listen to people, but the thing that makes us a community is being courteous to each other. So I hope that as we listen to the different discussions today, we keep that in mind, that we're courteous of each other, and that we realize that everybody here is trying to do the same thing we are. They're trying to preserve and protect Hamilton. the same thing we are, that they're trying to preserve and protect Hamilton. So, thanks. I look forward to a good town meeting. Thanks very much.
Recognize Phil Sterns, chairman of the Finance and Advisory Committee.
Good morning and welcome. I hope everyone received the report that the Finance Committee distributed with the warrant this year. We undertook this effort to clarify for you the Financial Committee's thinking on the articles. In most cases, we are in agreement with the Board of Selectmen, but in some cases, we hold different opinions, and since the warrant is a Board of Selectmen document, we thought this would be a way to communicate our reasoning for some of our votes. We have a number of issues in town that need attention or will need attention soon. Our water plant is struggling, and the Finance Committee supports the ongoing efforts to improve our water system and to develop additional water resources. Unfortunately, the Water Enterprise Fund is beginning to use retained earnings to cover operating expenses, so we must anticipate future water rate increases. The cost of trash collection and recycling continues to climb. Breaking this cycle will require effort. Separating organics definitely helps, but even with that, reduced services or increased expenses and probably some combination of both seems likely. We have an aging population. There are more seniors in town than there are school-aged students. Linked to that is our need for more senior housing, but we also need more affordable worker housing and housing for young families and town employees, including school employees who are ultimately town employees. Despite strong effort, we have failed to realize payment payments, those are payments in lieu of taxes for tax-exempt entities, and we're not getting any other payments in kind or contributions from these, and some of these entities incur significant town expense. This effort will continue to be addressed in fiscal year '20. The Finance Committee supports the town manager's efforts to increase our use of shared services where appropriate to grow the town's labor pool at reasonable cost. Regarding the issue of continuous funding of the Patton Homestead, while recognizing there's a lot of emotions attached to this asset, it's incumbent upon the Finance Committee to act on the basis of economic criteria, and we ask that you listen to John Prouge's explanation of our vote for Article 212. The Board of Selectmen has recently created a capital expense committee that Sean mentioned, and this is to assist the town manager, the Finance Committee, and the Board of Selectmen in developing a five-year capital plan with input from citizens to help establish the correct priorities. The Finance Committee supports this effort and encourages qualified citizens to volunteer. This past year, the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen approved new financial policies for disbursement, revenue turnover, travel reimbursement, financial reserves, and capital planning. In the next fiscal year, we will work on additional financial policies, including cost allocation, debt management, and forecasting. Having clear, well-thought-out financial policies will serve the town well. Hamilton is in good financial shape. We are within the Proposition Two and a Half levy limit, but our headroom is decreasing. This year, our expenses with transfers and school costs will increase 8.2%. That magnitude of growth on the expense side is not sustainable for long if we want to remain within that levy limit. On the bright side, the tax rate will remain below where it was in fiscal years 14, 15, and '16, and this budget will help prepare us for future capital demands and unanticipated expenses. The other half of the tax calculation, as you know, is property valuations, which in fiscal year '19 increased an average of 5.79%. A conservative assumption of a 3% increase was made for the fiscal year '20 tax rate projection. Our tax rate is also linked to the nature of our town. We have limited commercial space, significant open space, and a highly-ranked school system, all of which add value to the town. The school district represents over 60% of our operating budget, so it is incumbent on us to ensure that we get the best return possible on this investment, which we can continue to do by monitoring the district's yearly budget, expenses, and increases. Hamilton continues to enjoy a AAA bond rating, and we have significant borrowing capacity. Maintaining our strong bond rating will lessen the cost of future borrowing. The use of free cash for tax mitigation is an artificial tax reduction and is not sustainable. For a couple of years, we used excess free cash to lower the tax rate. This free cash was generated due to actual receipts being in excess of revenue estimates and some unused departmental budget line items. In recent years, estimates have been much tighter. In other words, we're doing a better job of estimating revenues and expenses. The result is less free cash, and as you will see in the warrant, we want to be conservative with how this free cash is used. If you found that FinCom report that we sent useful, we'll plan to do it again. And with that in mind, it would be very helpful going forward if the Board of Selectmen would endeavor to lock in all warrant articles further in advance of town meeting. Some articles were not voted by the Board of Selectmen until the day before the documents had to go to press. Finance Committee recommendations on various articles, 23, 24, 28, 213, 214, 220, and 31, 32, and 33, were based on incomplete or subsequently changed information. We recommend that the Board of Selectmen complete their voting and finalize all articles at least two weeks before these documents go to press. This year's fire drill has led to inaccuracies in the warrant and the FinCom report. It also created unnecessary stress for town employees who had to redo significant work in order to be well-prepared for today, and I want to thank them for their efforts. Allocating free cash, tax rates, operating budgets, capital plans, school budgets, school capital planning, trash collection, town hall renovations, workforce housing, all require long-term planning and focused implementation. We encourage you to educate yourselves about the candidates for the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, and the School Committee. The people you elect have a lot of work before them, and these decisions will have a significant impact on our town. Thank you. Now let's get to work.
Thank you. All right, I hope you've all read and brought with you your copy of the town warrant. If you didn't, there may still be some out in the front of the table. The agenda for this meeting is the warrant, and the warrant was prepared by the Board of Selectmen. Now, to bring an agenda item before the meeting, I'll recognize a member of the sponsoring board committee or an individual so they can make the motion. If the motion is seconded, I'll recognize the proponent to speak about it, and once they're done, I'll call upon discussion from you if you have questions or want to say something about it. If you wish to speak, you must first ask me to recognize you. In order to save time, if you could come down to one of the two microphones on either side, I'd appreciate it. Once you're recognized, please state your name and address, and then you may make comments and ask questions about the motions, and you'll have three minutes to do so. Your comments and questions must be within what we call the four corners of the motion. Please do not make comments about any person who is in favor or against the motion, just make a comment about the motion itself. It's okay to disagree, and please, please, please do not be disagreeable. Additionally, please no applause. And the reason I don't want applause is very simple. If people applaud after someone articulates a particular position on a motion, it may make someone else less likely to speak against it. Some people are more willing to speak in front of many people like this than others, and the applause may make someone who is just barely willing to speak not want to speak at all. My job is to make sure that doesn't happen. My job is to encourage those who want to speak to speak and to help them feel comfortable doing it. That applies to all of you. Otherwise, the very purpose of this meeting, to listen and consider viewpoints of fellow citizens, is undermined. In the same manner, there's to be no booing or hissing, which unfortunately has happened in the past. All motions to amend a motion must be submitted to the town clerk in writing, and if you need assistance in framing it, we can do it for you with town council's assistance. No more than one motion to amend may be pending at the same time. A vote is first taken on the motion to amend and then on the main motion, and if there's another motion to amend, it can come after the other motion. As I mentioned, when a vote is taken, I'll ask you to raise your voter card, and then we'll decide, I will decide visually whether it's the necessary majority or two-thirds or other type of vote. If I'm in doubt, or if seven voters question the vote immediately after I declare the outcome, then I'll have the vote counted by the tellers. In the event someone moves the previous question, what they're asking is that all discussion on the motion cease and that we take an immediate vote, and there's no debate on that. A motion to move the previous question requires a two-third vote. However, if I, as moderator, do not believe there's been enough discussion, I can delay that until another time when I feel enough discussion has taken place, if other people have indicated they want to speak. Finally, an announcement on hold. Some of our motions will include a listing of items that will be voted on as a group unless a voter shouts "hold" on a particular item. When there is a shouted "hold," and I encourage you to say it loudly to make sure I hear it, I'll condition the acceptance on the hold on obtaining the identity of the voter requesting it, and this information is for the minutes of the meeting to save meeting time when a hold is considered later in the meeting. If I'm unable to identify a voter requesting the hold, I'll simply ask you to identify yourself. All right, now let's go through the articles. This vote on Article 1 is by ballot on Thursday, April 11, 2019, at the Hamilton-Wenham Recreation Commission. The polls will be open at 7:00 a.m. and close at 8:00 p.m. Article 1.2, to hear reports of town officers, elected committees, and to take action there on or relative thereto. Reports will appear in the town report for calendar year 2018. I recognize Sean Farrell.
I move that the reports of the town officers and committees be received and placed on file.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those based by name? Aye, sorry. You know, this is going back to days and days ago, and before I used these things, it was a voice vote. I apologize. Those in favor, raise your voting cards. All right, thank you. Those against, raise your voting cards. All right, those who care. Article 1.3, to see if the town will consolidate in one consent motion containing the motions for these articles that, in the opinion of the moderator, are not controversial and can be passed without debate or take any action there on or relative thereto. I'll now read the list of articles to be taken up and voted on as one motion. Please shout out "hold" as the list is read. Any article motion for which there's an accepted "hold" will be deleted from the consent motion and taken up and considered according to its place on the warrant. All right, so the motion for the article numbers are as follows. 2.1, prior year bills. 2.2, compensation classification table. 2.7, annual financial actions. 2.9, annual budget for revolving funds. 2.11, OPEB trust fund. 2.15, grant appropriations. 2.16, personnel service and union contracts. All right, I've heard no holds. I recognize Sean Farrell.
I move that the numbered motions are set forth in proposed consent motions list for this 2019 annual town meeting, a copy of which has been delivered to the town clerk to be filed with the minutes of this meeting with copies made available to voters in attendance. Be approved by one vote. Each motion to be deemed a separate action under the warrant article having the same corresponding number.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? There are none. All those in favor, please raise your voting cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your voting cards. Motion passes unanimously. All right, we move on to Article 2.1, to see if the town will raise an appropriate... I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes. All right, thank you. Right. All right, Article 2.3, to see if the town will raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, money for the purpose of capital expenditures, and further to authorize the town manager to administer and expend funds from said accounts or take any action there on or relative thereto. Recognize John Poulich.
Raise and appropriate $238,000 and transfer from certified free cash $70,003 for the purpose of undertaking the project set forth in Appendix B to the 2019 appendix book, and further to authorize the town manager to administer and expend funds to effectuate these projects.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Mr. Poulich.
This is an article for the appropriation of capital expenditures for the town through either appropriations or available funds. It's a total, the total of $308,003 is comprised of six different items. New voting machines, replacement fire, police, and DPW vehicles, road and sidewalk repair and renovations to the Patton Park concession stand. FinCom originally recommended that the town appropriate for each of these items due to there being a clear need for each of the items and appropriate expenditures by the town. However, our original funding recommendation was that the entire $308,003 be funded through appropriation and not to use any free cash. The reason being that many of these expenses are recurring in nature, for example, the police fleet vehicles, DPW vehicle, and sidewalk road repair. However, subsequent to our recommendation, our printed recommendation that was distributed to the town, the Board of Selectmen and town manager changed the funding recommendation to use $70,000 in free cash. The rationale was that some of the items on this list, namely the voting machines and the new fire truck, were one-time in nature, and thus, their recommendation was to use free cash. Now, this has the effect of reducing the projected tax rate, but also, and I will caution you, it reduces the town's free cash, which as a general policy, FinCom is against using free cash to mitigate the tax rate. While, in order to deal with the change in recommendation, FinCom met immediately prior to the meeting today. While unanimously feeling that proper procedure was not followed in choosing the source of funding without input from FinCom, we nonetheless took to revote our recommendation and see if anything changes based on the new funding. The vote was still to recommend favorable action on this article. However, I want to point out that instead of a unanimous five-to-nothing recommendation, the recommendation was three-to-two. The two dissenting votes feeling that using a portion of this, the $70,000 in free cash with the effect of lowering the tax rate was not an appropriate use. And I welcome any of the dissenting members of FinCom to voice their reasons further if I have not correctly done that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please raise your voting cards? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Struggling to get out. Lynette Fallon, Goodheath Street. Can you remind us what, A, the policy is on free cash? As, I think it's typically as a percent of town expenditures or the total town budget, and then what the dollar amount in free cash is either right now before we vote the expenditures or as it will be after we vote the Board of Selectmen expenditures? Thank you.
Mr. Poulich. Ms. Batista.
Marissa Batista, Finance Director. So, our free cash policy is that we want at a minimum to have a 5%. With the... With the warrant, with the current warrant that we have in front of us, if all of those motions pass, we would still be at 5.3%. So, our free cash was certified in September of 2018 at $2.7 million, and if all articles passed today at town meeting, we would still have unappropriated free cash of $1.7 million, which represents the 5.3%. You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Oh, yes, are you, if you want to come down, please come down to the microphone, that way I'll know that I'll be able to see you, okay?
Hi. Evelyn Anziano, 36th Bridge Street. My question is, did you adjust the tax...
Is that, excuse me, is that microphone on?
Hello?
Chris, is that okay? Try it again.
That voice activated.
Okay, there we go.
Okay. Evelyn Anziano, 36th Bridge Street. My question is, what was your final decision on the tax rate increase? And because you didn't change that part, or you mentioned something about decreasing it, and then now I want to know what the final amount would be for us.
Mr. Poulish.
Not to confuse anyone, our recommendation on this in the actual act of it doesn't effectively change, doesn't actually change the tax rate officially in any way, but if you were to actually vote this the way our original recommendation went, where the entire $308,003 was appropriated, that would require more taxation. If you use $70,000 in free cash instead, which is the current motion on the floor, then the tax rate, with the projected tax rate that is, would actually decrease by probably four cents per thousand.
So, this no longer applies, this statement in our forms on the fiscal year 2020? It was 18, 18 cents? So, you're going to bring it down to four?
Very, exactly. That amount, the 18 cents, would be reduced to 14 cents approximately.
Oh, to 14, not four?
Yeah. Well, it's a four, four cents is the $70,000 change. Yes.
All right. See no further people down here? All those in favor, please raise your voting card. Thank you. All those against the motion, please raise your voting card. All right, thank you. Let me check it back on. All right, Article two-four. This is our annual general town and school omnibus appropriations article. I'll now recognize Mike Harvey, Superintendent of Schools, to do a report on the school district budget.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the Board of Selectmen, members of the Finance Committee, Town Manager, and to all of you, the assembled members of town meeting. The mission of the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District is to educate our children to become young adults who are of good character and demonstrate mastery of the knowledge and skills needed to be successful members of our global economy and engaged citizens of the 21st century. The district currently serves 1,715 students from Hamilton and Wenham in our five schools. And I'm going to start out my remarks today with some, a brief overview of some of the highlights. I always have to start this with apologizing because I leave things out, because otherwise I would be here for three days if I needed to talk about all the great things that are going on in the schools. But here are some of our highlights. So, last June, we graduated 143 students in the class of 2018. Here is a listing of our advanced placement highlights. Advanced placement is a college-level curriculum. Students who earn a score of three or higher on an advanced placement test are considered to have completed a first year of college-level curriculum. And as you can see, 175 students in the high school, that's roughly 31% of the entire school, took an AP class last year. And as you can see there, we have a very high number, 67% of our students actually earned that, that college credit, and then actually two students who were recognized on a national level for having a 4.61, and that's out of a five total scores. We also are measured through the, the state assessment, the MCAS test. All students in grade 10 take, take the MCAS in English Language Arts and Mathematics, and they need to actually earn, at least they need some improvement score in order to earn a diploma in Massachusetts. As you can see from the stats here, we're the blue. We are way higher than the state average in that. Last year, in English Language Arts, English Language Arts, 97% of our students were actually advanced or proficient on the test, and math was 94% advanced or proficient. Our students are also excelling outside of the classroom. This is just the delegation from our DECA team who participated in the state conference this year. That's 82 students. There's actually over 150 in the club that participate in this. 17 of these, of those 82 students qualified to participate in the international conference this year. And DECA develops skills for successful careers, builds self-esteem, provides leadership opportunities, and stresses community involvement in service. This year, for the first time, we also fielded at the high school a first robotics team. First Robotics seeks to promote science, technology, and mathematics exploration through team-based, hands-on learning opportunities. Students literally build a robot to perform a specific task and then compete against other students and from other schools. They work on communication skills, marketing, coding, electrical and mechanical engineering, and leadership. Our team this year had a successful first year. They were recognized on the rookie all-star team, and so they're actually competing again. Might actually be today. It'll be this month at least. Our students are also excel, continue to excel in the arts. Last month, high school senior Aiden Heady was recognized by Congressman Seth Moulton as the winner of the sixth congressional district's high school art competition. Aiden's work, which is up there on the left, sucked back in, will be exhibited for the next year in Washington, D.C., and Aiden will take part in a reception with the other national winners of this competition. We also continue to have a strong showing in the Boston Globe Scholastic Art Award Contest. This work, Fellas on the Beach by Violet Holbrook, earned a gold key this year. Nadehi Palai also earned a gold key in writing. And as I said, this is just a small sample of some of the great things that our, our students are, are engaged in every day in our schools. So, for the fiscal year 2020 budget, the school committee's recommendation and actually voted budget is a level service budget plus funding to start an OPEB trust fund. And so, when we talk about level service, we're talking about really a continuation of the current services, activities, and programs of the district. And so, for FY '20, level service plus that OPEB translates into an increase in our operating expenses after offsets of $1.9 million or 5.97% versus the FY '19 budget. The gross expenses after offsets for the level service really is 1.6 of that $1.9 million. And 99.6% of that $1.1, $1.6 million shows up in four real areas. Total salaries, special education tuitions, health, health insurance for employees, and then exit retirement. And so, really, that means the vast majority of the school budget this year is, for FY ' '20, is actually level-funded as compared to FY '19. And these four areas are either contracted or nondiscretionary in terms of that they are for students, for example, in special education tuition, for students who are in the most, most needy educationally, and those, those needs are, needs that we cannot take care of within the district ourselves. For the OPEB trust fund, OPEB refers to other post-employment benefits. Hopefully, someone learned that today. Took me a while to figure that out. Simply put, these are the retirement benefits for a public employee that's promised after they retire that's other than their pension. And this would include health insurance or life insur, and life insurance premiums. We've, as a district, we've undertaken the services of an actuary to prepare an updated actuarial evaluation for OPEB, and at the measurement date of July 1, 2018, the district's outstanding liability is over $35 million. We believe it would be prudent to establish an OPEB trust fund beginning in '20, and the first step is a $250,000 commitment to begin to fund an OPEB trust fund. And we have a funding strategy that will carry us over the next 30 years that would fully fund that $35 million liability.
I did it. I messed it up. So, as we look at our total expenses and, and offset, and funding sources sheets, you can see that the third line on this shows our, our total expenses after offsets budget of $33.7 million, which, as I said earlier, is a $1.9 million increase. That's the third line down of 5.97%. The next line down is actually our debt service increase, which is some good news, and that's to say that actually of, as of next month, we will have paid off the 20-year bond to construct Miles River Middle School and to renovate this building. And so, our debt servicing expenses are actually going to go down about $1.7 million. So, the total debt service expense will be about $400,000, and that's some of the projects that we've done to the elementary schools over the last several years. In the middle, you look at our funding sources, you actually see a decrease of $1.1 million in our funding sources, and actually, that's because as we've paid off the, the Miles River Middle School project, we will no longer be receiving reimbursement from the, from the school building authority towards those expenses, and so we see a resultant decrease. Our total net assessment after we subtract our funding sources from our expenses is $29.8 million, and that's what's then apportioned to the two towns. And as you can see, the total apportionment to the town of Hamilton is $19.1 million, which is a $716,000 increase from last year, or 3.9%. And so, this gives you a little bit of a history of, of how the school budgets have performed over the last five years. From FY '15 and including FY '20, the five-year change is a total of 21% over five years, which annualized, it adds up to 4.37%. Over that same time period, the town of Hamilton's net assessment has increased at an average rate of 2.65%. And you look down at Wenham, it's, Wenham's is actually 8%, and that's actually because we have a dynamic going on of, of population shift. Students, there are still way more students in Hamilton than there are in Wenham, but the rate is changing, that Wenham is actually adding students over every year while Hamilton is actually losing a few. And during that time period, a million dollars, 1.1 million, has shifted from Hamilton to Wenham in costs. And finally, there's a list here of some of how we're doing compared to some of the other regional districts in the state and our per-people expenditures. As you can see there, we're, we have for FY '18 last year at $18,000, $18,356 per student expense, and you can see as I was looking at some of the other regional districts in the state, how we compare to that. And then finally, and finally, I actually want to say, especially say thank you to the boards of selectmen and the finance committee. Earlier on this year, the school committee was, was advocating for a school resource officer position, and generously, the, the boards of selectmen and finance committees decided to assume that entire cost into the town of Hamilton's budget, and we're, we're very grateful for that. It's been a long time coming and long overdue, and so I want to say thank you for that. And I want to say thank you to all the members of town meeting for your support for the school district over the last several years. So, thank you. Thank you. I'll now recognize Phil Sterns to do a report on the town budget.
Mr. Bydow.
Do you have, do you have a point of water?
I wish to give a brief remark.
Oh, we'll, we'll get to that. We'll, we'll get to that when we get to the budget.
What I would like to say, we failed to fetch, like, for many years, great service.
Okay.
I wish nothing would break this section.
All right, thank you. Do you want to speak? Okay. All right, Mr. Melvins.
Hello again, and thank you to the gentleman in the back of the room who just stole my thunder, because I was going to thank Mike, so. So, I want to say good morning and thank you. On behalf of our Finance Director, Ms. Marissa Batista, and all of our department heads, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present our 2020 budget. We are pleased to say the budget presented here today has been endorsed by both the Board of Selectmen and the Finance and Advisory Committee. The budget proposes a spending plan for 2020 that protects the current level of service, reduces risks for the town, and properly compensates our employees. The total budget increase in the 2020 budget is just under $2.4 million over the covering year. This includes $824,000 in new spending on stabilization funds in keeping with our newly adopted fiscal policies. It also includes $706,000 for the schools and about $868,000 increase for town services. The increased town costs include costs beyond our control, such as insurances, contractual increases, and a contingency for three ongoing union negotiations. It also includes some additional money for three new positions. A school resource officer, a shared regional human resources director, and assistant public works director. Is this, is this right? Yeah, I guess so. All right. This is a balanced budget, and you can see in the slide that town revenues are projected to increase by 7.8%, and our proposed budget increase for the town and schools is also 7.8%. You can also see here that the budget increases spending from free cash, but as mentioned before, that spending is mostly directed into stabilization funds to protect the town's future. On this slide, you can see the breakdown of town spending. Despite the increased spending in the town budget, spending on schools and fixed costs such as debt service, insurance, and non-service-related items still makes up 73.5% of our town spending overall. Conversely, property tax revenues continue to make up 87% of town revenues. So, that's where we get almost all of our money is from our property tax. Nearly 74% of our costs are beyond our control to budget, and 87% of our revenues come from local property taxes. That presents our greatest challenge. This budget also includes, also includes, excuse me, an operating capital budget with about $308,000 in spending on capital needs. You can see on this slide that we are proposing a total of almost $2.9 million in capital projects, but many of these are bonding items which you will vote on later. In an effort to be sensitive to the tax rate, we have proposed that about $145,000 of the budgetary spending on capital projects also come from free cash. That was the item that you voted on in the previous motion. So, thank you. The proposed water department budget, which will be a little later in, in the presentation here, is, proposes no increase in water rates and will have no impact on the tax rate. But we feel it is important to recognize that five years ago, when the board of selectmen proposed a rate hike for the first time in many years, they pledged to hold the rate steady for the next five years. This is the fifth year. This water budget fulfills that pledge, but it relies on almost $178,000 of retained earnings to do so. Retained earnings is essentially free cash for an enterprise fund. We are forecasting that the fund will likely need a rate hike in FY '21. So, don't want anybody to tell you I didn't tell you so. The town's newly adopted fiscal policies are also respected in this budget proposal. The town's newly adopted fiscal policies are also respected in this budget proposal. Our new reserve policy is commonly accepted as best practices and municipal financing call for us to aim for 5 percent of budget in free cash, and we are at 5.3 percent. This budget proposal, though utilizing some free cash, maintains that 5.3 percent. The budget also increases our General Stabilization Fund account to 3.4 percent of the general fund. Overall, we are making strong commitments to stabilizing our future fiscal health. I'm getting close to the end, don't worry. We are also establishing for the first time a capital stabilization fund and maintaining a commitment to funding our OPEB liability on a schedule previously adopted by other town meetings. Again, one area of weakness in this budget is our use of reserves in the Water Enterprise Fund. We expect to have to address this next year. The next slide shows the past five years of our use of free cash in the annual budget. As you see, going back to FY2015, the town has historically used a substantial portion of free cash to balance the budget, even against an increasing tax rate. So in FY15, as Mr. Sterns mentioned earlier, you had a tax rate of $17.09. In FY16, it went up to $17.25. That was despite the fact that you were using free cash to help balance the budget and suppress the tax rate. This year, our tax rate does increase a little, to $16.90. We're still under those high years, and we're using no free cash to balance the budget. Finally, we would like to share with you where our tax dollar goes by department. Nearly $10, $9.84 to be exact, goes to fund public education, a worthwhile expense and one that we definitely improves our home values. Another $2.60 goes to overhead costs such as debt service, insurances, and that kind of cost, things we can't control. That leaves just $4.46 of your tax rate per thousand to provide for public safety, public works, health, cultural activity, recreation, general government. These are the quality-of-life services that you folks respect and expect. And I hope you enjoyed our presentation.
All right, thank you. All right. I'm now going to read each appropriation, and for any item a voter would like to discuss separately, please shout out "hold." $2,230,772.12 for general town government. $3,104,236.35 for public safety. $19,101,708 for Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District. $203,630 for Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School District. $2,079,290.89 for Department of Public Works. $326,03.7 for Health and Human Services. $1,038,286.62 for Cultural and Recreation. $3,483,12 for Unclassified. All right, I recognize Phil Sterns.
I move that the town raise and appropriate the sums read by the moderator for schools and all other town expenses which are set forth in the 2020 fiscal year budget in Appendix B of the 2019 appendix book and Appendix C of the 2019 appendix book with the corrections read by the moderator. There were no exceptions for items held.
Is there a second? Discussion? Mr. Sterns?
So since the original Finance Committee vote on this article, these numbers have changed. And however, we did meet this morning and concluded that these changes would not necessarily change our vote recommendation, but I will say that we only voted with a 3-2 majority, subject to the issues that John already mentioned. The Finance Committee met jointly with the Board of Selectmen multiple times during the development of this budget, and included a lot of joint meetings with the School Committee and a very focused meeting with a couple of the Finance Committee members and the district administration. And we want to thank the administration for that and also wish Dr. Harvey very well in his new position. The Finance Committee's report for this article details our opinion, and since you already have it, I don't want to take too much time rehashing it here, but there are two key points. On the town side, this budget helps prepare us for unforeseen contingencies and future needs by allocating free cash to the stabilization fund and the new capital stabilization fund per our new financial policies. Using free cash to prepare us for the future is a better use of our limited resources than a brief unsustainable reduction in the tax rate. On the school side, which is also funded by your tax dollars, cooperation from district administration while vetting the school budget was better this year. Unfortunately, as pointed out by Dr. Harvey, most of the cost increases are beyond the control of the School Committee and the administration, including the almost $900,000 increase for out-of-district tuition. However, concerning the largest budget item, which are personnel costs, the Finance Committee believes that COLA increases for school employees should not be or continue to be higher than for other town employees as they have been. We will continue to press this point during future collective bargaining negotiations as all town employees, including school employees, deserve fair and equal treatment. The Finance Committee did vote to approve the revised school budget that does not include the SRO funds at our meeting on March 27.
Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Jerry Fallon, 38 Giddy Street. I just had one question to Dr. Harvey. The over $800,000 in out-of-district tuition, how many students is that covering? If you have that number.
Say it again.
Fifty-two students.
Fifty-two students. Any further discussion? Yes, sir. All right. Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your voting cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your voting cards. Thank you. One moment. All right, the motion passes. Now I've noticed that our State Representative Brad Hill is here. Would you like to make a couple of statements or not? Brief, yes, a brief, thank you. Oh, no, go ahead.
I'm going to be very brief. I had hoped to be here at nine o'clock, but Ipswich is having a bean-counting meeting that I needed to be at, and I unfortunately did not have the opportunity to go to the last selectman's meeting to recognize and say thank you to two of your outgoing elected officials, Allison Jenkins and Scott Mattern. I want you to know how hard these two individuals have worked on your behalf, and I can tell you that I have met with both of them over the last few years on a regular basis as they were advocating on your behalf when it came to state items that were of concern to all of you. So very quickly, I would ask that both of you to come forward if you don't mind as I offer you these House of Representatives citations in recognition of your dedicated service to the citizens of Hamilton as a member of the Hamilton Select Board. We appreciate how hard you folks have worked on behalf of the citizens of Ipswich... Excuse me, Hamilton. Can you tell I just gave the safe speech? No, no, no. I didn't give that speech. I will let you folks know, today's political climate, it is not easy to be an elected official, whether it's at the local level, the state level, or the federal level. These two have done yeoman's work on your behalf. We don't always agree with our elected officials, that's part of politics, but you need to know that these two individuals worked tirelessly on your behalf over their tenure as members of the Select Board. So thank you for the partnership that we have had together, and more importantly, thank you for the service that you have given your community. And I want you all to know it's been a job well done. Congratulations and thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and that will be all of the remarks that I will make today. Thank you.
All right, Article 2.5. To see if the town will raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds money for the purpose of capital expenditures as approved by the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District or take any action thereon or relative thereto. I recognize Scott Mattern.
Good morning, and before Bradley, Representative Phil, thank you very much. It's very mutual. He does a tremendous amount of work on behalf of our town. Thank you. I move that the town take no action on this article.
Is there a second? All right, Mr. Mattern.
Okay, seems a little weird. We're proposing something and saying you shouldn't do anything about it. Essentially, what we're trying to do is begin an annual process of having both an operating budget, things that support what goes on day-to-day, and all the great things that Dr. Harvey explained that it does for our students, but also capital needs. Just like on the town, we need to look out long-term, think about what needs are for our facilities, our investments that need to be made. So even though there's nothing in at the amount this year, and Phil Sterns is going to talk more about that, we want to create this as an annual event so it's a muscle memory kind of thing, so we're not just thinking about what it takes to operate things, but this facility, Cutler, all sorts of other buildings, the largest infrastructure we have in our town is the school, so we want to make sure you're aware of what's going on with it. So therefore, we want to start to have this as an annual warrant article. Mr. Moderator asks that you recognize Phil Sterns.
Phil Sterns.
So this article essentially asks for nothing and it has no impact. Now I imagine the Board of Selectmen chose to include it as a way to remind the district of their responsibilities. The key point here is that the School Committee and the administration failed to provide any capital plan after their plan last year was defeated at this meeting. There were items in last year's plan that we believe are important for the safety, facilities, maintenance, and education of our students. We expected a five-year reasoned capital plan to be put together by the administration and the School Committee and to be included with the school budget. And we really hope that the Committee and the administration will give this responsibility the attention it deserves. At the March 28th School Committee meeting, it was decided that they will start to work on a capital budget after these town meetings.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion to take no action, please raise your voting cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your voting cards. Thank you. All right, the motion passes. Article 2.6, to see if the town will approve fiscal year 2020 Water Enterprise budget or take any action thereon or relative thereto. I recognize Nick Tensin. Try again.
Doctor? There we go. I move that the town raise and appropriate from the water receipts and retained earnings the sum of $1,844,184 to fund the 2020 budget for the Water Enterprise as set forth in Appendix D to the 2019 appendix book.
Is there a second? Discussion?
The Water Enterprise Fund, I think most people know, is funded entirely through the receipts of the water, the water receipts that they receive each year. The important thing here to note is that this year, we are utilizing, starting to utilize the retained earnings that has been accumulating over the last several years. That will be appropriate for this year and probably next year. And as I think you've already heard, that we should expect a water increase in the next, by 2021. Are there any questions on this? There's, we've reviewed it and found that this is a very appropriate, sound budget.
Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your voting cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your voting cards. Motion passes. All right, 2.7 we've done already, so 2.8, to see if the town will act on the report of the Community Preservation Committee on the fiscal year 2020 Community Preservation Budget and specified other projects and appropriate or reserve for later appropriation monies from Community Preservation Fund annual revenues, specific reserves, or other available funds for the administrative expenses of the Community Preservation Committee, the payment of debt service, the undertaking of community preservation projects, and all other necessary and proper expenses for the year or take any action thereon or relative thereto. Now, please turn to Appendix E if you have it. There's one correction I wish to bring to your attention. The amount from the Community Preservation Fund balance should be $65,300, not $67,000 for the second project, the debt services, the Sagamore Hill Conservation Project. All right. I will now read the recommendations of the Community Preservation Committee. Please shout out "hold" for any item which you would like to have a separate discussion. The proposed financial actions are as follows. One, appropriate $41,200 from the Community Preservation Fund balance to fund the debt service for the Donovan acquisition. This bond will be paid in full in fiscal year 2020. Two, appropriate $112,300, $65,300 from the Community Preservation Fund balance and $47,000 from the fiscal year 2019 Community Preservation revenues to fund the debt service for the Sagamore Hill Conservation Project. This bond will be paid in full in fiscal year 2032. Three, appropriate $150,000 from the Community Preservation Fund balance as requested by the Town Hall Billing Committee for the Hamilton Department of Public Works to fund the OPM Owners Project Manager and design services for the restoration renovation of the Town Hall. Four, appropriate $197,000, $150,000 from the Community Preservation Fund balance and $47,000 from the fiscal year 2020 Community Preservation Fund revenues to fund the restoration renovation of the community house. The project must commence by July 1, 2020. I heard a "hold," and can you tell me your name, please? Five, reserve $47,000 of fiscal year 2020 Community Preservation Fund revenues to the community housing reserve. Six, appropriate $23,500 of fiscal year 2020 Community Preservation Fund revenues for administration costs, including but not limited to annual community preservation coalition membership fees, signs, publicizing CEPA projects, and salary for part-time community projects coordination position. All right, I recognize Jay Baller.
Good morning. Good morning.
Try it again, sometimes it takes a second to click in.
There it is. Good morning, Jay Butler, 78 Old Cop Road, Chair, Community Preservation Committee. I move that the town appropriate a reserve for future appropriation monies from Community Preservation Fund annual revenues, specific reserves, or other available funds for the administrative expenses of the Community Preservation Committee, the payment of debt service, the undertaking of community preservation projects, and all other necessary and proper expenses for the year, as read by the moderator, excepting those items held, which each item to be considered as a separate appropriation, and further that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute agreements on terms acceptable to the board to the extent necessary to effectuate the public benefits of such projects.
Is there a second?
Seven.
All right, discussion, Mr. Butler.
I'll wait for my slide to come up. Okay, we have, as you just heard, we are paying off a couple of bonds. The Donovan acquisition will be paid off this year, so that $41,000 will go away. The annual admin expenses are routine. One of the other motions on there was just to move some funds into the right bucket within our own revenue source. We have two grants. The first one is the Community House. The Community House will celebrate their 100th anniversary in 2021, and as part of the celebration or recognition of such, they're initiating a 100th anniversary campaign to raise money for renovations and restoration of the building. It's a three-part project. The first one is to address those projects that are appropriate for CPC funding. If you go to the next slide, please. Not very readable, so I'll read it. On this list is a number of items that the Community House management felt would comply with regulations for CPC funding. There's structural engineering and electrical drawings, replace the heating and cooling system, update the electricals, put in sprinkler heads, work in the basement for dehumidification and repairs for water infiltration in the past, make the elevator accessible to the basement, fix the front doors to meet ADA compliance issues, work on the roof, slate and gutters. In terms of restoration, we're looking to restore the fireplace, the projector room, the stage, do some de-letting in the lobby, and do a historical research project. All those things I just read amount to $295,000, so that's part one of their three-part program. And so, the Community House management applied the two-thirds, one-third rule, and thus came before us the Hamilton CPC and asked us for $197 grand, the remaining to be pursued with Wenham CPC. We approve this $197, which is the motion before you. There will be a motion made to reduce this amount in a few minutes. The second grant is the Town Hall. In previous, in a previous town meeting, you had approved 75 grand for us to pay for our owner's project manager and the designer architect. They've been on board, they have some preliminary designs, we just released them the last week and a half, they should be on the website soon. There'll be a short presentation made later in this meeting, because this first ask for $150,000 is to continue the design and the work of the owner's project manager to get to at least the next town meeting. The, because of the timelines associated with CPC grants, they'd go out several months, there had to be an application for funds put in quite early. It's only been in the last months or so, as we started to look at some of the costs, there was a need to ask for a little bit more, so there will be another ask for the same reason coming up later in this program, and you'll get a presentation on where everything is. So again, the $75,000 grant has been spent for the most part, and we're working on some other funds to get through till July. So this ask is to continue that work and continue designing. Nothing's cast, nothing's been decided yet. Have some ideas to share, some costs to share, but you'll get more details a little bit later. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Nothing. All right. We're going to vote then on the motion to include the items except for the held item. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your voting cards. All right, put them down. All those against, please raise your voting cards. All right, the motion passes. We now go to the held item. Mr. Butler. Did you want to speak to it? Or did you want, who's the person, why don't you come down and speak to it then, okay?
(inaudible).
Do you want to make the motion, Jay, on the?
Yeah.
Okay, sure. Mr. Madder.
Good morning. Apologize ahead for a little bit of confusion about this one. We support the Community House, have donated to that consistently in our town, it gets used by our towns, and it's really a regional resource with Wenham.
Yeah, if you could just, there needs to be a motion on this.
Sorry, got to speak to it before I advocate for it. I move that we appropriate $100,000, $50,000 from the Community Preservation Fund balance, and $47,000 from the FY '20 Community Preservation Fund revenues to fund the restoration slash renovation of the Community House. The project must commence by July 1, 2020.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
All right, discussion, Mr. Madder. How was your line?
Sorry, jumped ahead, apologize. So, restate, we support the Community House. The Wenham CPC reduced the amount that was requested, a little bit of a surprise to us, we don't know exactly why, and our CPC has repeatedly asked to meet with the Wenham Community Preservation Committee, because we have so many two-town things that we do together. So we ask that the Wenham CPC do that regularly and meet with our Community Preservation Committee. In a somewhat of a reaction to that, the Select Board said, well, if they're cutting $50,000 down to $50,000, why should we be paying $200,000? It seemed like a mismatch compared to our normal funding of regional-type activities, where it's usually a one-third and two-thirds. And we just quickly came up with a number of $50,000, which is not a one-third, two-third ratio. So, the $100,000 number would be a Hamilton provision of two-thirds of the amount to match the Wenham amount of $50,000. So, sorry for some of the confusion related to that. The Select Board voted on these things separately. We originally said $50,000. My personal recommendation to you all was that would, to match this and be equivalent or balanced with all the rest of our regional agreements, we do this on a one-third, two-third amount, and from what I understand, the Community House is supportive of this as well.
May I just ask you a question about your motion? All right, do you have the script in front of you? Number four.
Yes.
Did you mean to say appropriate $100,000 in parentheses, $53,000 instead of the other number?
Yes, excuse me. So let me, should I modify that?
Yeah, just restate your motion.
All right, so I move that for, item number four, appropriate $100,000 per ends, $53,000 from the Community Preservation Fund balance, and $47,000 from the FY '20 Community Preservation Fund revenues, close per ends, to fund the restoration slash renovation of the Community House. The project must commence on, by July 1, 2020.
Okay, is there a second on that? Corrected motion?
Yes.
Thank you, there is. Okay, Mr. Butler.
Mr. Moderator, could I ask you to recognize Melissa Elmer, Executive Director of the Community House?
Yes.
Melissa Elmer, Executive Director of the Community House for almost 13 years. On behalf of the Community House, I would like to express our sincere gratitude to the town for previous CPA grants that have supported the restoration of our portico, our coupla, and waterproofing needs. It has made an incredible difference in our ability to tackle some very major building issues that would, otherwise financially devastated our organization or our budget. As we prepare to celebrate the 100th anniversary of the Community House in less than two years, we've recently submitted a proposal that would help us address a myriad of issues as part of our larger capital campaign, where we will be raising up to $3 million to modernize our facility for current and future use. Although most of our efforts within the campaign will not be eligible for CPA, the current proposal addresses issues which are eligible for support, and many of which are critical, such as our heating system, which is failing, I'm sorry, fire suppression issues and systems that must be brought up to code, those heavy front doors that we all know are barely ADA compliant, and other specific structural and systems issues that pose safety concerns. The Community House was gifted to this community by George and Emily Mandell in 1921 after losing their sons Samuel and World War I. Without an endowment left for maintenance and repair, it's been the sole responsibility of the Community House to maintain and preserve this facility for the past 98 years. On an annual basis, the Community House invests over $75,000 into the maintenance of this facility. We're super busy over there, we have over 1,000 visitors every week, and our building is truly busting at the seams. We offer a vibrant community theater program, summer concerts in Patton Park, Ski Bradford, the father-daughter ball, the community block party, and a new before and after-school program, an enrichment program that will be opening this fall, the kids' community at 284. I know no one here needs to know or be convinced of the impact of the Community House. Everyone here has felt its impact in one way or another. We also know that every dollar invested in our organization and our community center, our community center, is a dollar that's invested directly right here in our own community, in our backyard, in the lives of the people who live here, the families who live here, and continues to contribute to an overall sense of community that makes Hamilton truly special and a desirable place to live. Community Preservation Act funding, CPA funding, is unique, and it's a critical resource to assist historical organizations such as the Community House, which have limited funds. It would otherwise fall into disrepair. Some of you may know, 70 years ago, that was the case. There was only one more year left for the Community House, and it had fallen into such a state of disrepair. We recognize that every historic property in town needs and deserves CPA funding, and there are many compelling causes as well. So in the spirit of community pride and understanding that we really are all in this together, and recently learning about future other projects such as Town Hall that are in need of funding, and is the position of our board, that we would be content with a reduced sum of $100,000 for this project. This is in lieu of the $197,000 that was approved by the CPA Committee, in order that funds may be left in reserves for the future requests for Town Hall, the Patton Homestead, and much more. Meanwhile, a $100,000 gift from Hamilton will represent the two-thirds, one-thirds split we've mentioned, which is recommending a sum of $50,000 towards this project at their town meeting this afternoon. Our board truly feels that a total of $150,000 between the two towns will provide us with just enough funding to address the most critical items on our current list of restoration needs. So, thank you in advance for considering. Thank you to all of the town administration for their hard work on this, and the residents in advance for your support of our request.
Thank you. Further discussion? All right, Ms. Jenkins.
Good morning. As a resident of the town, I just wanted to make it clear, the motion.
Yeah, might, a little problem that might.
The motion has been changed, I gather, to $100,000 for you to vote on today, and it's been represented that the Board of Selectmen have voted on that and made that recommendation. As a board member, this is the first I'm hearing of it. It's the only thing the board has voted on, is a $50,000 motion. So I just want to first say I'm frustrated, but secondly, say that this is not a vote of the board, we haven't yet to take one. Thank you.
Sure, Mr. Madder.
Apologize, Mrs. Jenkins, I thought it was clear that the board separated all the amounts into two different votes, and one was $50,000 for this amount, and that I was making a motion and asked that the Selectmen consider this, but it's really up for everybody now that it's a motion for the floor.
Thank you for the clarification, but I don't believe that that's how it was presented.
Okay, yes ma'am.
So, just, so I assume, Mr. Moderator, that on meeting, that we're voting on an amendment to a motion before town meeting, and that we can vote on it as amended, that we can vote on the amendment regardless of the Board of Selectmen's vote or not.
So we have a motion before us.
Yeah.
On the, it's to appropriate $100,000 in parentheses, $53,000 from the Community Preservation Fund balance, and $47,000 from the fiscal year 2020 Community Preservation Fund revenues to fund the restoration renovation of the Community House. That project must be commenced by July 1, 2020. That is the motion on the floor.
Okay.
And it can be voted on irrespective of how different people view it.
Okay. The Board of Selectmen specifically. Okay, I have two questions. Can someone tell me what the annual revenues of the CPA is, including the 2% tax plus the state matching funds, either for last year or as forecast for the coming year? And then, I'm wondering what the balance is of the CPA funds after all the appropriations proposed.
Mr. Butler.
The annual revenue due to the 2% surcharge is roughly $450,000. The state match last year, that we received in November was 19%. It's projected to be 11.57% for this year. Earlier this year, myself and our coordinator, Dor Fox, along with Joe Demelowitz and Patrick Refit, met with Marisa Batista, the Finance Director, and we went over all of the commitments, all of the unfunded grants, annual bond repayments, et cetera. And a few, as of a few months ago, she had estimated that we would have $582,000 in our coffers by July 1 of this year. And then again, we begin the collection for the following year, which is roughly $450,000 plus the state match. So, what you see before you is we have $582,000 available, if you will, for grants, and before you is a request for 100 and another one for 150, so you can deduct the 250 from the 582. And that's where we are.
All right, further discussion? Seeing none. Oh, yes ma'am.
Jeannie Miranda, 21 Garfield Avenue. So I'm here to support the Community House, as I did as a board member for 12 years, but I would like to support the original vision of the Community House by the Mandells as a home for Hamilton, Wenham community service, and for use and benefit of the citizens of the two towns. You might not be able to see that picture, but there's Hamilton Wenham Community House on that. Today, there's no Hamilton Wenham, it's just the Community House. And looking at the, because I'm not on the board now, as you can tell, but if you look at the vision today, if you don't mind if I read this, dedicated to enrichment through the arts and events that promote togetherness and strengthen the community, enhance the quality of life for everyone that works and plays on the North Shore. So the vision has expanded beyond Hamilton Wenham. So I would like, that's my comment today, to draw it back to Hamilton Wenham. And my question for Melissa, or else who can answer this, is really to, as a board member, I never understood Stage 284. I can't find anything about it on the website now, even though I was there when it formed. Only on the Internet, like we always do, look for information, I found that there are four founding women of Stage 284. Two do not live in Hamilton Wenham, I don't know the other two. One's Beverly, one's Topsfield. My only point is, I would like the monies to be here for Hamilton Wenham people. I love the North Shore. I think it's great, but I'd like to go with Emily Mandell's vision, that this be for Hamilton and Wenham. Thank you. That's all. I do support this amendment of doing 100,000, I will say that, because I love the Community House and I love the community gathering together. Thank you.
Okay. Further? Yes, ma'am? Sure. Absolutely.
Hi. I'm Christina Camperato. I find it interesting that I can sing in front of 40,000 people, but I don't like talking in front of 200 of you. I'll do my best. So I've been a resident of Hamilton for 20 years and I'm on the board of the Community House and I'm the incoming president of the board. And on behalf of the board, I wanted to thank all of you for seriously considering our request today and I wanted to thank Melissa Elmer for being an incredible force at the helm of the Community House. I would like to address a few things that Jean said and I appreciate those comments. Maybe Melissa can help me at the end. I'd like to first present what I have in mind, just to speak on behalf of Stage 284 and tell you what a, an important integral part of the Community House this program plays and how it affects our community. It's the first I have heard of anyone thinking that it doesn't serve our community, it is 100% for our community. We randomly have some people from other towns coming and performing and seeing the shows, of course, but it is all Hamilton Wenham and it is an amazing part of our organization. I've been a musical theater enthusiast for 45 years. I've worked with dozens of theater companies and this is among the strongest I have seen. Unlike some musical theater and theater companies, we are fortunate to have our own space. We have our own lights and our own sound and that is part of what makes it an amazing organization. In the past year, we had 220 children participate in the youth studio program and that includes Wednesday workshops, the kids come right over from school, a play in a day, those are usually on weekends, Wednesdays, or during vacation time. We have vacation workshops. These are all Hamilton and Wenham children that enjoy these opportunities. We've had 250 children and adults participate in the musicals in the past year and they include, to name a few, School of Rock, My Fair Lady, Annie, Susical, and Mamma Mia, just to name a few. These shows bring thousands into our community. In the last week alone, we had 1,200 people flow through the doors to enjoy nine sold-out Mamma Mia performances. We envision these audience members eating out at our restaurants and shopping at our stores as well. Stage 284 is bursting at the seams with approximately nine shows each year. The staff is crazy awesome. They hire the most talented, caring, and dedicated directors, choreographers, and stage managers I have seen. The goal is that each participant and audience member leave, yearning to come back as soon as possible, and that is what we are seeing. It is a place for everyone, no matter talent or financial means. It is a warm, cozy, inviting environment. It unites us and it enriches us. Please support this organization. I think that's all I have to say. I hope I answered your questions. I wholeheartedly believe that this organization is all about Hamilton Wenham. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none. All in favor of the motion, please raise your voting cards. Thank you. All those against, please raise your voting cards. The motion passes. No, that was a separate motion. All right, we've done Article 29, so we're on to 210. To see if the town will raise and appropriate or transfer available funds as some of money to the Hamilton Development Corporation or take any action thereon or relative thereto. I recognize Rick Mitchell.
So I'm Rick Mitchell. I'm Director of the Board of Hamilton-
Can you speak into the microphone? Just raise it up a bit.
Yep. Is that, is that working?
Yep.
Okay. Sorry. Rick Mitchell, Chairman of the Board of Directors, Hamilton Development Corporation. Would you like me to read the motion, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. "I move that town raise and appropriate $74,880 to the Hamilton Development Corporation."
Just a second. All right. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you so much. I've got a brief overview of what the Hamilton Development Corporation has been doing and plans to do in the coming years.
Could you speak a little bit louder? Apparently, some people over here can't hear. Put it right up there. Thank you.
Usually, I talk too loud and too much, but I'll try and keep going. And press the middle button. Nothing's happening.
Ah, there we go. Okay. Thank you. I want to talk about major initiatives that we're undertaking. One is the development of 5963 Willow Street, which is Max Schuh property. This isn't a slide related to it, but I want to tell you a little bit about that. The goal there is to sell a property that we bought about five years ago for maximum profit while achieving several complementary goals. We want to take the property through the Planning Board Site Plan Review to gain approval for development of approximately 20 one-bedroom rental units, then put the permitted project out to bid for private development, which would accomplish the following: substantially increase the value and marketability of the property, yield a substantial increase in property tax revenues, bring new people downtown to patronize local businesses, address a severe shortage of rental options in Hamilton, and allow us to use the proceeds from the sale to focus on Railroad Avenue improvements with the goal of beautifying and stimulating business activity in the commercial district. And that's what relates to the slides I'm about to show you. And the goal here is we're looking at the redevelopment of Railroad Avenue really as a pilot project to show what we could do to beautify the entire downtown business district. We really have two commercial districts, one on, once each side of Bay Road, and since Bay Road certainly cuts them in half, we're trying to work on things that will help reunify them, and this is one of the pilot projects we're proposing to go forward. We have two design scenarios that I'll go through here quickly. Scheme A is to look at Railroad Avenue and leave the existing telephone poles that are there, but paint them black on the bottom and do some significant pedestrian sidewalk and road improvements, and I'll just go through these briefly. This is looking at midway through Railroad Avenue, putting a crosswalk in, planting more trees, sidewalk improvements, road improvements. This is looking from Bay Road down the new Railroad Avenue improvements. As you can see, there is an introduction to Railroad Ave, signage. This is, again, trying to connect the two elements of downtown together. This is from the commuter rail. Now, we have a second scheme here, which is much more dramatic and expensive. This is removing the poles completely with many of the same improvements, so you have no telephone poles on the site. And again, midway through, we've looked at this, this is parallel parking. We've had a couple of different meetings, two different meetings actually, with towns, people, butters, and businesses to look at these options, and they really favor actually keeping the parking as it is. Option one, that you saw, keeping the poles, is probably about a $2 million project. Option two, with removing the poles, is probably about $3 million project. So this is quite an undertaking and it probably would take, you're probably looking at about a five-year effort to make this actually, before we got a shovel into the ground. The reason this is important and connected to 59 and 63 Willow Street is, we hope to redevelop that property and sell it at a significant increase in its current value and use the proceeds to actually fund a significant portion of these improvements and look at state funds for the balance. The goal here is to not use taxpayer funds to fund the redevelopment of Railroad Avenue. And finally, and hopefully I'm getting close, Jeff, is assisting downtown businesses in beautification, and the goal is to promote and support downtown businesses and improve the appearance of the commercial district. So in January, we initiated a meeting with downtown business owners where they gave us input on about a dozen different things they'd like to see happen in downtown. A key issue is parking and parking signage, so that people are directed to places where there are parking and signage that actually advertises it as a commercial district. And they're also looking for help with permitting events in the downtown. And I'll just, here's a plug for the downtown business people. On May 19, they're proposing to close Railroad Avenue and have a street fair. So we're working with them on that, including putting up a web, a separate page on the town web page advertising downtown businesses and having links to their businesses, so if people want to see what's going on, they can find out. That includes issuing a quarterly update to business owners on addressing their concerns, paying for the new page on the website, and seasonal beautification that you might have noticed. We put out flower baskets in the summertime, we pay for those, and wreaths in the wintertime. So those are some of the things that the HTC is doing and that we will use the meals tax money, not taxpayer money, to fund those efforts. So I urge your support of this requested appropriation.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, sir.
Yeah. Jerry Fallon again. Question for Rick. How much money do you have in your coffers now from the meals tax money, of course, we've been giving you for, I don't know how many years now it's been?
Can you hear me? So how many, how much money is in the coffers of the Hamilton Development Corporation now? And can you give us an update on your mortgage, which I thought was coming due and payable this year, but maybe a little color on where your numbers are? Would appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Mitchell?
Jerry, I'm not sure I got the second question. So on the first, our budget has $168,000 in it. That pays for our administrative costs as well as for hiring consultants to do things like this. And just to answer the person's concern about looking like Linfield, these were conceptual drawings, just to show what it potentially could look like. This doesn't mean what it will look like, because it's going to have to go through a very thorough and long and involved public review process, so everybody gets a chance to take a look at that. Jerry, what was your second part?
Why don't you stick up to the microphone, so everyone can hear you? Thank you.
You currently have a mortgage on the Willow Street property that you own. I forget what the outstanding balance is. It's over $400,000. I thought that was coming due and payable this year, or has it been extended, or am I incorrect about that?
Well, you're pretty close. There's a balloon payment due on the outstanding mortgage of about $400,000. We're actually talking to Salem Bank about extending that for two years so that we can take it through the site plan review process and develop it and then sell it with the site plan permit already there, because what we found in two previous attempts to draw interest is, Hamilton, believe it or not, is perceived as a pretty difficult place to have projects permitted, so we thought we'd try and get over that hurdle.
Yes, ma'am?
I have a question.
Yes, just right up to the mic.
Evelyn Anziano, 36th Bridge Street. I have a question. The crosswalks look great, but do we have anything that's going to go up that's going to be visible? I've been in states where, because of heavy foot traffic, like we have, we have heavy foot traffic and a lot of cars, and sometimes they have these large blinking lights that go on when you want to cross the street and it alerts people almost a whole block away so that they know enough to slow down. And so that's my question. How is the traffic going to be?
So, just so it's clear, we're not voting on a project today? We're just voting on appropriation?
No, we're not. But explain how that is? And if that's part of the appropriation.
Sure. I actually know, I've seen it in other cities, they actually embed the lights into the crosswalk across the road, so when somebody's crossing, they're blinking in the roadway, they're underground. We have not got anywhere near that. This was a conceptual drawing to begin the discussion about what could be done in the downtown. So anything we do, we want to try and reconnect the two parts of the commercial district, the shopping center and Railroad Ave. So we're going to be looking at anything we can do to calm and slow down traffic and improve the visibility and pedestrian flow.
Thank you. Any other?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm just still a little confused about the budget-
Do you expect us to say your name?
Yeah. I'm sorry. Lynn F. Allen, Goodview Street. Not tall enough for this. So, thank you. So I'm still a little confused about the, Mr. Mitchell said the budget was $168. Could you break that? I'm interested in how the revenues work and whether there's any, I think the Hamilton Development Corporation is a separate legal entity, so I'm wondering whether there's any money in that entity. So you get the meals tax, which is a tax and is largely paid, I think, by Hamilton residents, because it's paid in Hamilton restaurants, which are probably, I guess, more than at least 50% attended by Hamilton residents. So there's the meals tax coming in every year. There's the town meeting funding, which seems to be at every meeting we give some funding. And I'm wondering how those work and then whether you have any balance amount in an account that is other than the town. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell?
Well, our budget starts at the beginning of the fiscal year with $168 in it. Then we, the expenses that flow from our operations, hiring consultants, paying tax, paying tax revenue, one important point is, we're a public nonprofit and we don't have to pay real estate taxes, but we pay $7,000 a year in real estate taxes. So that's part of our budget, the cost of the mortgage for the property, part of Dor Fox's salary, who provides some partial support, administrative support, and consultants that we hire to help us work on projects, pay for things for the business owners downtown, the flower baskets, things like that. So that's what we're spending.
If you're going to speak, no, if you're going to speak, you just need to do it at the microphones, people. If you didn't answer your question, just restate it very, very briefly and he'll answer.
Okay. My question is not about expenses. My question is about revenues. You get a 2% meal tax, which I assume fluctuates somewhat in your tier? No? You get a flat amount of money? Is that what you're saying?
All right. Mr. Mitchell?
Meals tax is a 0.75% tax on any meals purchases that are made in the town of Hamilton. That money goes to the state. The state reverts it back to the town. This year, it's $74,880. So-
Is that listed?
Yes. Yes, okay. Sorry for the confusion.
All right. No further discussion? All right. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your voting cards. Thank you. Those against the motion, please raise your voting cards. Thank you. The motion passes. All right, we've done 211, so we're on 212.
paying tax revenue, one important point is, we're a public nonprofit, and we don't have to pay real estate taxes, but we pay seven thousand dollars a year in real estate taxes. So that's part of our budget, the cost of the mortgage for the property, part of Dor Fox's salary, who provides some partial support, administrative support, and consultants that we hire to help us work on projects, pay for things for the business owners downtown, the flower baskets, things like that. So that's what we're spending.
If you're gonna speak, no, if you're gonna speak, you just need to do it at the microphones, people. If you didn't answer your question, just restate it very, very briefly, and he'll answer.
Okay. My question is not about expenses, my question is about revenues. You get a two percent meal tax, which I assume fluctuates somewhat in your tier, no? You get a flat amount of money, is that what you're saying?
Mr. Mitchell?
Meals tax is a point seven-five percent tax on any meals purchases that are made in the town of Hamilton. That money goes to the state, the state reverts it back to the town. This year it's seventy-four thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars, so...
Is this an acquisition?
Yes, yes, okay. Sorry for the confusion.
All right. No further discussion? All right, those in favor of the motion, please raise your voting cards. Thank you. Those against the motion, please raise your voting cards. Thank you. All right, we've done two eleven, so we're on two twelve. To see if the town will raise and appropriate to transfer, or transfer from available funds as some of money to the patent homestead fund, to fund fiscal year two thousand twenty operating costs, or take any action thereon or relative thereto. Recognize Scott Mattern.
I move that the town raise and appropriate eighty-six thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars to the patent homestead fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I understand Mr. Demello would like to speak to that.
Thank you once again, I promise this is the last time I'll be up here. First, I'd like to introduce you to Kaylee Paray. Kaylee Paray is the new patent homestead director. You may recall that in the fall, you, this town meeting graciously gave us an operating budget of ninety thousand dollars, directed us to do a few things, including hiring a patent homestead director. Here she is. She'll speak to you in a few moments. Article two twelve is our request for an operating budget for the patent homestead. I know that the operation of this property over the past few years has created some turmoil and frustration in the community, I've heard it. Inaction and a lack of direction, I think, has led to a feeling among some that the property may not be worth it. We want to help change that. Our request this year, our request this year is for eighty-six thousand dollars to manage the homestead, program events, provide a home for the Hamilton Historical Society, which moved in to the homestead at the end of last month. The operating budget includes about forty-two thousand dollars in indirect costs that get charged to the homestead by the town. So, for the eighty-six thousand dollars we're asking for, forty-two thousand goes back to the town. That leaves us about forty-four thousand dollars to implement the business plan that we were asked to create and by the fall town meeting as well. I'd like to point out that we asked for ninety thousand dollars for six months in the fall, and we're asking for forty-four thousand for another twelve months, so, I hope that shows we're trying to be diligent with your funds. The eighty-six thousand dollars will pay for the patent homestead director's salary, this person here. She's only been on the job in six weeks and in, seven weeks, and in that time she's created a business plan, as was requested. She's made connections to the community, she's started a book events out there, she's started a program, public activities out there, in six weeks or so. It will provide us the funding needed to implement the business plan, it pays the annual costs of things like utilities, basic maintenance, and insurance, and it provides an appropriate home for the historical society in the north wing. I'd also like to remind you that the Wenah Museum is our tenant, and they are in the south wing. So, we have two ongoing uses out there now, and the director, and we're gonna be programming the space. This will, will also provide additional meeting space for small boards and committees. The northernmost room in the north wing, adjacent to the small parking lot that's there between the stables and the house, is avail, will be available to be used as a meeting space if needed. So, I know that there's a shortage of meeting space in town right now, and that will be another new option. There is currently a lot of momentum, and probably your period of most activity out there at the homestead since you took the gift. In the last six months, we've hired Kaylee, we've submitted a four hundred and eight thousand dollar grant to the state for capital improvements that will not cost the town. We've concluded a feasibility study with the, with a consultant called Empower Success Core. They were hired to help us determine our chances of success. Their report is online, the short of it is, they think we can be successful, they think that we are on the right path. Empower Success Core and the patent homestead proposed pricing structure for holding paid events out there, and we modified it with the board of selectmen and Kaylee's input. And PHI board of directors has also expanded, they're now up to six people, which I think shows renewed interest in the site. We've improved and developed our partnerships with other organizations in the community, and, I keep saying this, we developed the business plan. We were asked to develop a business plan to make the homestead self-sustaining, and we have developed one that provides, offers several paths to success. The plan includes annual decision points, opportunities to assess our programs, I mean, sorry, our progress against our plan, and make adjustments. We've also worked with the PHI board of directors on drafting a marketing campaign, and worked with Kaylee to start to reach out to business partners, vendors that would utilize the property for weddings, or reunions, or the like. The homestead business plan offers a varied pricing structure, with accompanying options for events and programming that can develop revenue streams and attract visitors. The business plan is also on the website. But, the short of it is, we don't just say, "Oh, we're gonna run it as an event center with weddings and reunions." We anticipate some amount of use of that, and we also anticipate doing things like, you know, pop up cafes or caverns in the stables on a Thursday or Friday evening, so that people can come in and enjoy the property. Those would be paid events, we charge the vendor, the vendor will charge you for your drinks and your sandwiches. There are a number of other things, I'll let Kaylee get into the weeds on that, I don't want to belabor the point. The decision points come at the end of August, the end of November, and in January, prior to formalizing a budget for the following year. And the last decision point, the fourth one, comes after the town meeting, so that we can respond to whatever town meeting tells us. In closing, I'd simply like to say that I know there are people here who feel the property has been mismanaged, underutilized, and we recognize that, we're trying to respond to that. I've only been here six months, seven months. The town meeting asked us to hire a director, they gave us an operating budget and asked us to see if we could put together a business plan. That was just last October, we've done all of that. At the end of October, the board of selectmen made it one of my goals to try to make the patent homestead self-sustaining. I'm trying to do that, but I need the resources to do that. I think this is a modest request, and we've, again, I've tried to respond to everybody's requests to be responsible. If you could take a minute, welcome Kaylee, hear what she has to say about the business plan and some of the other events she has going on at the homestead this year. I think you'll be impressed. Thank you.
Ms. Paray?
I'm also a little on the short side. Hi, I'm Kaylee Paray, and I've been here for about a month and a half, I'm the director of the patent homestead, and in that time, I've been busy networking with community partners, crafting a business plan, and learning about the property. The patent homestead is a historic property consisting of a house, a barn, stables, and twenty-three acres of open space. Anchoring either end of the homestead are two partner organizations. So Wenah Museum rents the south wing for their collection of the Patton family archives, they lead tours of the collection and welcome researchers. The Hamilton Historical Society moved into rooms in the north wing two weeks ago, and they'll be offering educational programs and welcoming researchers into their space shortly. With the help of PHI and the town manager, I've created a business plan for revenue generation and activity at the patent homestead. The plan offers varied events at different price points. We've also established four pivot points to assess performance. These are late August, late November, late January, and early April. During these times, we'll assess how we're keeping to the plan and adjust the schedule or fees if necessary. The plan's goal is self-sustainability in three years. Each year we'll increase our revenue generating activity as more people have visited events at the property and interest builds. I've also been networking. In the seven weeks since I was hired, I've booked six events and have five more in the works. Our partners for these events include PHI, the Council on Aging, the Wenah Museum, the American Legion, the West Point Alumni Association, MOAA, Kites Over New England, the Rec Department, Accord Food Pantry, Community House, Two Couples Getting Married, and a few others. The patent homestead property is full of potential, and I see it breaking into three categories. First, public use, the grounds are already available for public use. This winter, we had snowshoers and cross-country skiers using the land. Now that the snow has melted, the homestead is a great place to come walk your dog, throw a frisbee, or look for wildlife. There's also a small dock for launching kayaks or canoes into the Ipswich River, and this bottom right picture was taken by a Hamilton resident just a couple weeks ago, as he was paddling out. This area is, it's free and it's open to anyone to use the property at the homestead. Public programming will include some of the events that I showed earlier, but I've also been collecting other ideas as well, such as a lecture series, tea in the rose garden, art classes and exhibits, and many, many other activities. Public programs will be open for all, for free or for low-cost admission. Finally, private event rentals are a source of revenue so that we can offer the public programs. The place is a beautiful location for weddings in the rose garden, under a tent, or in the stables. In the house, we can offer space for meetings, mixers, and other business events. A combination of different types of events will meet our revenue goals. Grants and sponsorships can also cover the cost of particular events, and proactive budget management will ensure that we keep our costs to a minimum. The patent homestead has been in a passive state since the town accepted the gift. In two thousand nineteen marks the start...
All right, Ms. Paray, I need you to wrap this up.
This is the start of the active time to benefit Hamilton residents and beyond. I invite you to get involved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Prolich?
I'd just briefly like to explain the position of FinCom on this article, which is actually the unusual position of making no recommendation, so I want to give a little explanation on why that is. In the past meetings, specifically the one last fall, we had unanimously recommend to fund the ongoing operations of the patent homestead. However, we did note that we had yet, as a committee, to be convinced of the long-term viability. However, we certainly recommended the ongoing funding, and wanted to see the homestead hire director, which is Kaylee, glad to see that has actually happened. And, on top of that, we then challenged them to develop a robust business plan. It's really a matter of timing here, but I do want to reiterate that FinCom needs to be convinced of the ongoing viability, because the original gift from Mrs. Patton definitely foresaw the possibility that this might not be a successful long-term venture for the town, and made the provision that there was an option to actually sell the property with half the proceeds going to the town, and half the proceeds going to a charity as determined by the Patton family. That being said, we did understand at the time that the hiring of a director was definitely necessary to develop this comprehensive business plan and establishment of milestones. As of the time of making our recommendation, that had yet to be completed, Kaylee had just started, was working, you know, tirelessly to come up with this business plan, so at the time, we didn't want to yet give it our stamp of approval by voting a favorable recommendation, but by the same token, we also didn't want to unfairly prejudice this article by giving it an unfavorable, unfavorable recommendation, and therefore defunding the project. So that is the reason why we gave no recommendation. But we do, now that the business plan has been established, we look forward to being able to embed it as a group, and working with Kaylee and the rest of the patent homestead on further development of this. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion? Whoever gets there first? Okay, Corinne?
Thank you. My name's Corinne Cale, thirty-sixth Rock Maple Ave, president of the Patent Homesteading Board of Directors, PHI, as you continually hear. We are six, I want to remind everybody who we are and voice our support for this warrant article. We're a six-person volunteer independent nonprofit, created strictly to support and preserve this town-owned historic patent homestead as a community asset for all of us. We have no other purpose than to help the town. Our vision continues to be a homestead where families, the community, and veterans enrich their lives, as the pictures and the ideas that Kaylee talked about, social and cultural events, access to the Ipswich River, military-focused programming, we believe that there is something for everyone there at this unique, absolutely beautiful twenty-three acre property. We recommend you to support this warrant article, because, yes, the town is finally making progress! We've been as frustrated as anyone. This is gonna be a self-supporting property, and that we can all enjoy. In two thousand seventeen, we recommended that a director was needed to coordinate the activities and bring in that revenue to make it self-sustaining. Volunteer board could not do that on our own, we needed a partnership with the town. So now with the new town manager and the new director, there is finally an infrastructure in place to bring life to this historic and absolutely irreplaceable property. Finally, the potential for the scenic property can be realized, finally, the revenue necessary to make the place self-supporting can be generated. Finally, a true partnership. The operating funds are necessary for the director to do her job. Once revenue is realized, over in a couple of years, the town will no longer have to support it. Thanks to past votes at town meeting, the exterior has been, the exterior renovations have been completed, new roof, new gutters, new siding, new paint, the seventeen eighty-six house is once again shining. A team of us has been alluded to, has worked with an objective nonprofit group to look at the revenue strategy, they definitely came back and said, "What a gem, you have incredible piece of property," and that the interest and significance in the Patton name alone brings public and private programming and rental opportunities, especially with organizations interested in the legacy of General George Patton. The information has all been incorporated into the business plan. We have welcomed three new board members, including a retired Army major, who's begun to introduce us to the homes, and the homestead, to various military organizations for advice on fundraising. With Kaylee here, the board is freed up to do fundraising. A team of thirteen of us, including the executive director of the Wenah Museum, held a workshop for developing our fundraising messages. We've met with five individuals who are gonna help us with this project. We believe that the funding of the eighty-six thousand three forty-three is reasonable. One fact that hasn't been reminded today is that with the gift and the sale of the four and a half acres, the town, that property brings in one hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in tax revenue. We cannot ignore that. That is helping bring down your current tax rate. So then to turn around and appropriate eighty-six thousand with forty of it going back to the town for overhead, is really, really, a minor amount of money to permit us to all enjoy this property forever. We believe there's something there for all of you, whether it's the historic preservation, military history, open space, or continued town identity with the Pattons, as in Patton Park and the high school generals, we encourage you to vote yes on this article.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
I'm Doug Trees, five five seven Bay Road.
Could you, just a little closer to the mic, that one's kind of sensitive, so you gotta put it up and speak right next to it, thank you. No, get right up to it, yeah.
I'm Doug Trees, five five seven Bay Road.
Can you hear him?
No.
No, you have to get actually closer, so, there you go.
Hello, I'm Doug Trees, five five seven Bay Road. I'm an architect, and in my career I've had a lot of experience with buildings like this. Two years ago, my very good friend John McQuain was on this board, and I had long discussions with him about the fact that what was gifted to the town is a residential, single-family house. And to use this for commercial purposes, it has to have, under the state code, a change of use. It has to be converted to an assembly use to allow the groups that they're proposing for their financial plan to come into this house and use it. If it's been used up to this point, my question is, it doesn't have an occupancy permit for that use, it's very disturbing. Now, in this financial plan, my second point, the finance committee is making no recommendation, but it appears to me that their proposal at best is thirty thousand dollars a year in income from bringing groups onto the property, with an expense bottom line of a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. I really question why the finance committee can't make a recommendation based on those numbers.
Thank you. Any other, did you want to respond to that, John?
I would like to respond to that.
But, Mr. Prolich?
Thank you. The reason why we didn't make recommendations, we did not have that business plan at the time we made our recommendation. It wasn't that we assessed it.
Oh, if you want?
Right, we can't meet as a group. We want to meet with the actual Patton homestead board and Kaylee, and go through the actual business plan before, we want to do the analysis before we actually make any recommendations in the future.
Okay. Mr. Demello?
On the, on the issue of being able to use the space, first of all, most of the, a lot of these are envisioned to be, right now, in the stables and in the exterior, so I don't need an occupancy permit. And we actually have had the building inspector and the fire inspector come out and review the property, and they've given us the ability right now to use the property with up to forty-nine people inside. Future improvements to the home, capital improvements to the structure that would be paid for through funds raised in a capital campaign by the PHI, would build out the place to allow a larger capacity of up to maybe a hundred people or so, but we're not there yet, and we're not proposing that yet. So I just wanted to make sure we clarified that, we are absolutely within our rights to use the property the way we're proposing to use it. Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes, sir?
Ray Ripple, forty-nine Mill Street, I'm president of the Historical Society. You may have seen my picture a little while ago in the junk that I had, not junk, but a lot of material that I had put in the Patton homestead. It happened very quickly, and I would have to say that I was quite concerned early on whether this had a chance of succeeding at the homestead. There is no question, after you met these two people that were just prior to me, I had no doubts. I was asked if I could move to the, to the Patton homestead. May, March twenty-seventh, I arrived... March 27th, I arrived, all the material that was in the basement of the Town Hall, from which we operated for quite a while. We started in somebody's barn in prior to 1961. We formed as a Historical Society. We moved to the stage of the Town Hall. That's the second floor of the Town Hall. We were asked then to make room for the other department, and they moved us to the basement of the Town Hall, which was not accessible, handicapped accessible. It was damp, it was small, and guess where we are now? Usarists. We are up there, and I'll guarantee you that these two people that you saw speak is sure to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, sir? No, actually, I couldn't tell you. Jim, if you want to come on down to the mic. Oh, no, no, oh, yeah, no, no. If you want to speak, I'll recognize you. I couldn't tell. Yeah, go ahead. Sure.
My name is Farista Clark from up and just beyond Bridge Street, Sagmo Street, and this seems to be my sort of annual speech that I make at the Town Hall, but this time I've got a little different touch on it. I think I'm the only guy alive who has actually shook the hand of George S. Patton, and I did that back in 1944 when he came here for a parade in Boston, and he spent the night over at the air property in Wyndham with his brother-in-law. And the next day, he asked Ms. Dayer to get together any of the relatives and wives and kids that were with people that served with him in the Second World War, in the Third Army. And my father was one of those. He was a field artillery commander, and he did a very fine job with him. So I was invited up. My mother took the five kids, we only five was there. We went up to the house and we all met and talked, and I shook his hand. He came over and patted me and told me what a nice guy my father was, and I kind of agreed with him. So we had a very good little talk, and it stuck with me all my life that the history of the Patton family is right here in Hamilton. And what they've done, the principles they stand for, some of the younger kids accuse me of talking Joanne into making the gift to the town and talking her into- anybody that knows Joanne Patton, you know you don't talk her into anything. She made her mind up and decided she wanted to give it and have it remain this way in the town, and all I have done is tried to support that idea ever since and tried to influence quietly that we should take it and treat it. Remember, it's a national monument. It's a piece of history that belongs to us, and as the members of the people of the town of Hamilton, we should take care of it and treat it right. We're going to get benefits out of it, a lot more later on. You've already heard today what they're doing, what they're doing at these meetings. The combination that they're working out now with the Wyndham Museum is going to give it that much more strength. They're moving on to the history of the Equestrian life here in Hamilton, which were very prominent, very outstanding. And I think if we let this thing go, we're going to be going through this every year and discuss whether we give it money or do it or not. It's part of our history and it's part of this town, and I just kind of see if we can- I mean, I like to come up and do it, but I'm getting to be 83 years old. It's a little hard to keep it up forever. And I see this right around my edge, he's 89. He gets up and speaks and takes care of it, but all these things, stand-up, we just give a little wave. Anyway, I don't want to put him in a bad situation, but I really think we ought to get this thing settled comfortably in our minds. It's being handled well, it's being done well, and let's put it behind us.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Bob Curry, 713 Bay Road. I would just like to alert you, maybe, are there any people here from Patton Ridge? No. There are two separate entities on this property now. The $150,000, the $150,000, $250,000 in tax revenues comes out of a separate economic system now than the Homestead. And I know people who put money down at Patton Ridge and backed out of it because they learned that there was going to be this development. You know, there were going to be activities, weddings and things like that, and they were going into it because they really enjoyed the view down across the meadow and the pastoral scene, and they backed out. Suggestion would be that you have a conversation with the people who live on Patton Ridge and prepare them for the reality of what's coming down. Most are from out of town, I think. I don't know if there are any Hamilton residents there at all, but that could be one of these conflicts, you know, where something happens without people knowing and they get upset.
Thank you. Mr. DeValos?
I just want to lay that here. I've already reached out to the Homeowners Association of Patton Ridge. A couple of their members were present the night that we unveiled the business plan, and I'm trying to set up a meeting for them, myself and Kaylee with them, to go over it. We want to be particularly sensitive to them. They're our newest neighbors out there. They're hopefully going to become very active in town, but I want them to get active in the right way. We are very sensitive to things like noise and traffic and parking, so we're going to work with the residents there to make sure that what we propose is something that they can live with. Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Good morning. Bill Burridge, 33 Cunningham Drive. I'm here to support the Patton Homestead. I was a member of the board for two and a half years, and I'm not here to discuss finances, but I'm here to discuss what it means to all of us as a town. First, it's General Patton's Homestead. This is significant value to us as a town. It enhances the character of the town and the unique charm that we have here in Hamilton. We've hired a bright young lady to be the director, and as you can see, she's making great strides already. I'm on a subcommittee with her, and she's taken charge of this. I think in the very near future, this is going to be a very great place to visit. It is now. It's going to be something that we can all take pride in, and I would ask us all to extend this a little bit and support the Homestead. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other individuals. If you're in favor of this motion, please raise your voting card. Thank you. Those against, please raise your voting card. Thank you. The motion passes. All right. Article 213, to see if the town will raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to the stabilization fund or take any action thereon or relative thereto. Recognize Phil Sterns.
I move that the town transfer from certified free cash $321,087 to the stabilization fund.
Is there a second? Mr. Sterns.
Once again, since the original Finance Committee vote, these numbers have changed. We met this morning and concluded with a majority vote of three to two that these changes would not affect our vote. The stabilization fund is a longtime-established fund that is considered best practice for government accounting. This fund acts as a buffer for town expenses and finances in the case of unforeseen events such as excess snow removal, major equipment or facilities failure, or other emergencies. It can also be used as a revenue source in the town budget. We have instituted a policy to maintain a minimum balance of 5% of our general operating fund revenues. Approval of this article will bring us to about 3.5% of that 5%. So any use of these funds would require a two-thirds vote at town meeting, so these funds won't be used without your approval.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your voting cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your voting cards. Motion passes.
Do you ever ask for anybody voting against any of these?
Yes, I just did. If you want to come up to the microphone, you have a point of order?
Just a suggestion-
If you have a point, come on up and speak in the microphone so people can hear what you have to say.
Mr. Moderator, you've been asking for those who are in favor without asking for those who are not in favor.
I've been asking-
Declaring the motion just on the basis of those that voted in favor.
My understanding is the words I use are appropriate. Okay. Town Council has just confirmed that with me. All right. We're on to Article 214, to see if the town will establish a capital stabilization fund for the special purpose of funding capital budgets and all incidental and related costs and further to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds to fund this special purpose stabilization fund or take any action thereon or relative thereto. Recognize Phil Sterns.
I move that the town establish a capital stabilization fund for the special purpose of funding capital budgets and all incidental and related costs and transfer from free cash $503,023 to the capital stabilization fund.
Did you mean certified free cash?
Yes, I did. Certified free cash.
Is there a second? Mr. Sterns?
Once again, this number's changed a little bit, but the Finance Committee did meet this morning and voted three to two to conclude that these changes would not affect our original vote. A capital stabilization fund, this is a new fund that we want to establish today. It's part of the financial policies that we've been working on, and it's another best practice that we want to adopt. The purpose of the fund is to put aside money to pay for future capital expenses. Capital expenses include items such as road paving, water treatment, building renovation and repair, major equipment purchases, et cetera. Putting money aside to help fund these future projects, and there are many, can preserve our debt capacity as a town. Any use of these funds, once again, would require a two-thirds vote at town meeting.
Any further discussion? Are you coming down to the mic or? No, okay. Guess you are. Yes, ma'am?
Jenny Beauregard, 50 Hamilton Avenue. Just as a non-financial, non-economist person, why do we need a separate capital stabilization fund as opposed to just putting these monies into the other stabilization fund and using it for that purpose?
Mr. Sterns?
There's different uses. In other words, the regular stabilization fund is for emergency uses, snow removal, operating expenses that go over what we've budgeted for. Capital stabilization fund is much more long-term looking. We have a new capital committee now that's been developed by the Board of Selectmen. This committee is going to help us put together a more thorough capital plan for the town that looks out two, three, four, five years beyond just the next year's budget. And then when we decide what our priorities are and we're looking for how we're going to fund that, we would then have access to this capital stabilization fund to use funding for that.
So the general stabilization fund, it would be improper to use it for these capital purposes? It's not set up for that?
So the general stabilization fund is for ongoing operating expense needs in case of emergency, and this is for long-term capital plans. Two different animals, really. Yep.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your voting cards. By the way, this requires a two-thirds vote. Thank you. I'll put them down. All those against the motion, please raise your voting cards. The motion passes with two-thirds in favor. All right, we've done 215 and 216. We're on to 217. To see if the town will amend its action taken under Article 201/5/2-14 of the warrant of the annual town meeting held on April 11, 2015, which vote authorized the borrowing of $5 million to pay costs of water distribution system improvements, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, so that such funds may, in addition, be borrowed and expended to pay costs of additional phases of the water distribution system and facilities, including the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, or take any action thereon or relative thereto. Recognize Nick Tensin.
Sorry. I move that the town amend the action taken under Article 215/4-2-14 of the warrant at the annual town meeting held on April 11, 2015, which vote authorized the borrowing of $5 million to pay the costs of the water distribution system improvements, including the payments of all costs incidental and related thereto, so that such funds may, in addition, be borrowed and expended to pay the cost of additional phases of the water distribution system and facilities, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto.
Is there a second? All right, discussion. Mr. Tensin?
The import of this is really that it's to continue the water distribution work that's being done, but also ancillary costs, valves and the water tank to be included in that. It's just slightly broadening the appropriation.
Mr. Farrell, are you going to speak to this?
I was, Mr. Tensin.
Okay, all right. Mr. Olson, DP Director, were you going to speak to that?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to say, if Mr. Olson comes forward if someone has some questions. Thank you.
Just so I give them a chance. Any questions, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please raise your voting cards. Thank you. All against, please raise your voting cards. The motion passes. Article 218, to see if the town will approve $1,500,000 or some other amount to pay costs of water treatment plans improvements project, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, to determine whether this amount shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise, or take any action thereon or relative thereto. Mr. Tensin?
I move that the town appropriate $1.5 million to pay for the costs of the water treatment plant improvements, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And that to emit these appropriations, the treasurer, with the approval of the selectmen, is authorized to borrow such said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 85 of the general law, or to pursue any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town thereof. Therefore-
Is there a second? All right, Mr. Tensin? Or is it Mr. Farrell? Who's speaking to this?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Tensin since he's on a roll, and if anybody has follow-up questions, Mr. Olson will come forward.
Currently, we have a water treatment plant that is doing a very good job treating the water for minerals and for metals, but what's happened in recent years is that the water source has gained organics, decomposing leaves, branches, other things that are getting into the water system. When that water is introduced, it makes the purification system less effective. So the objective here is to build, in addition to what we currently have, a pretreatment facility which will clear up the organics before it's- facility which will clear up the organics before it's introduced to the water distribution system. That's a general overview. More specifically, if you have questions, Tim Olson can answer those.
All right, discussion. Yes, sir.
Jerry Fallon, 38 Good You. We all received a flyer in the mail recently about this problem and that apparently we've exceeded some state levels, parts per million or whatever, regarding this. In that flyer, it mentioned that we may have to close down another well. I know we closed a well down when we, as part, I think, as part of the development of the Patton Ridge project. Can somebody speak to that, maybe Mr. Olson? Is that true? Are we going to be shutting down another well? It said something about that in this flyer.
Mr. Farrell.
So, to answer the question there, we, with the notice that went out, we had a bit of an anomaly. We had some infrastructure issues with a pipe that had come a little bit disconnected, and some of the solids were coming back into the system. It was fixed fairly quickly, but yet the numbers spiked for a couple of days. As far as wells going or being closed, I should say, we have Idlewood 2, which is one of our wells, which is offline right now because that one has the most amount of the organic chemicals in it. So, we have that one offline currently until we address the system. We're doing some other kind of temporary fixes to keep the numbers down as part of the filtration system.
Yes, sir.
Bob Curry, 713 Villa Road. I think the underlying issue is that the Ipswich River and its accompanying aquifer are being tapped to the very, very bottom. The towns that are using that source of water have gone over in water usage, what that system can provide. And as you get, as I understand it, as you get down to the bottom and scrape bottom, you get things in the water that are antithetical to healthy living. So, but the point I want to make is that our water usage is outstripping the capacity of our water source. And it's a problem that we share with other towns that use the Ipswich River.
Thank you. All right, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your voting cards. Thank you. All those against, please raise your voting cards. The motion passes by a two-thirds vote. All right, on to Article 219 to see if the town will appropriate a million dollars or some other amount to pay costs of paving Chabaco Road, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, to determine whether this amount should be raised by borrowing or otherwise, or take any action thereon or relative thereto. Recognize John Coolidge.
I move that the town appropriate one million dollars to pay the costs of paving Chabaco Road, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amounts under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 8.5 of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore.
Is there a second? Thank you. Discussion, I recognize... Well, who's going to speak to this? Mr. Farrell.
So, currently, as many of you know, there's a section of Chabaco Road that is unpaved, and it's an issue with, I guess, a lot of different parties involved. We've got our DPW is, it feels like we're constantly hiring a contractor to regrade it, and then we have some weather issues, and then we're kind of back at square one with it. Also, it's a public safety issue. Police and fire have issues with the trucks on the road. Our postal workers can't deliver at times in the winter time. So, this would be to improve that section of the road, pave it, and also pave and improve the other sections of the road leading up to that.
Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Hi, Silas Nary, 8 Villa Road. I just want to point out, I'll say Villa Road is one of the few roads off of Chabaco Road. It's at the base of Beck Pond near Chabaco Woods. So, we have a unique perspective on Chabaco Road and how everything works there. With the dirt section not being paved, it prevents the road from being cut through into 128. You can just imagine how much traffic would come through from 128 up Chabaco Road to Essex Street for Hamilton, Essex, et cetera. So, by paving it, you're creating a cut through. We know people, there'll be more traffic, traffic will be faster. Manchester did a study on the same road, Pine Street, on the other side of 128, where over a nine-day span, they had, I think it was thirteen vehicles doing excess of eighty miles an hour on that road. There was another thirty-eight vehicles doing an excess of fifty miles an hour in the same nine-day span. So, it gives you an example of what could happen should you pave that and make it a cut through. What exacerbates that even further is Chabaco Woods and that very tight section where people park, they have their dogs, they're walking, they have kids, fishermen, boaters, everything. I don't, like, without taking significant safety measures to mitigate the traffic and the speeds, you're going to have a big problem with safety and the residents and the people using the area where someone's going to get hurt because somebody not knowing the road, or a kid, or somebody who doesn't care, is going to come speeding up that road and around that corner, and there's going to be someone standing in the middle of the road, and they're going to get hit. So, that's my point, is I think the safety measures related to this paving need to be seriously considered. And I'm all, I'm actually for paving the road. I think it makes sense for all the reasons that everyone said. But before you do that, we need to seriously consider how we do that and what measures we take to prevent the problems that will be caused by it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Alda Group, 193 Chabaco Road. I live right after the Chabaco Roads where parking is for the woods. At that point, the road becomes a straightaway right across from Villa Road. The traffic, as soon as cars get by the woods, earlier, up further in Chabaco Road, there's a lot of curves, there's a lot of natural measures to mitigate people speeding or people driving uncontrollable. Once they get past the turnoff into the woods, cars take off. I see it all the time. I wave them, "Please slow down, please slow down." I agree with my neighbor around, there's an awful lot more work, I believe, would need to be done before this decision be made. I believe neighbors need to be included in those discussions, and I think safety issues in the upper part of Chabaco Road that's currently paved would need to be addressed as far as width of the road, how cars, boats. We get these huge boats going down Chabaco Road. We have people driving in the middle of the road right now. It's more common than not that people are driving directly down the middle of the road because there's no room on the sides. I think it's a big mistake to make this vote today. I think much more research needs to be done, and I think neighbors need to be included.
Thank you. Mr. Farrell.
I share the concern about the traffic and the cut through. The Board of Selectmen just recently adopted a complete streets policy with the state, and basically, it would make the road actually safer. It's going to dictate the width of the road. I don't want to say sidewalk, but it's going to give more room. If you've been out there now, there's not much of a shoulder, and if people are out walking their dogs and whatnot, you're pretty much on the road. So, this would make it a lot safer for pedestrian traffic, bikes, et cetera, and also drivers. And we would work with the design team and the neighbors and the community to get a good set of designs and to make this a safe road and not a cut through. There's ways to mitigate the traffic through signage and patrolling and et cetera.
Thank you. Did you want to speak? Yes, sir.
Tom Thorne, 384 Chabaco Road. Reading the article is that it's quite vague, and I'm wondering the extent of the project and if it actually considers or is proposed the proposed road that was on the site plan.
Is there somebody who could speak to that? Joe.
If you're not happy with my answer, I'll get Tim Olson to come down and talk to you. But I think that what you have in front of you is a funding article. It's a request for funding to begin a project. A project like this always requires a public process. It's going to require us to go before the Conservation Commission. It's going to require us to have neighborhood meetings and talk to the folks, both on the paved end and the unpaved end, and kind of consider all the circumstances. It's going to require to go through the Complete Streets Committee that was established with the Complete Streets bylaw. So, what we're asking for today is a million dollars to put with some other money that the DPW has already set aside for this, earmarked for this, so that we could do the project. The project will not happen until a process plays out and addresses many of the concerns you have here today. So, I hope that helps.
Okay. All right, this requires a two-thirds vote. If you're in favor of the article, please raise your voting card. Thank you. Put them down. Those against the article, please raise your voting cards. Thank you. The motion passes by a two-thirds vote. Article 2-20 to see if the town will appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars or some other amount to pay costs of town hall OPM and design services, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, to determine whether this amount should be raised by borrowing or otherwise, or take any action thereon or relative thereto. Recognize Mr. Toomey.
Mike Toomey, 11 Hickory Lane.
You're the Town Building Committee Chair.
Correct.
Yes.
Would you like me to read the motion first?
Yes, sir.
I move that the town transfer from certified free cash seventy-five thousand dollars to pay costs of the town hall OPM and design services, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto.
Is there a second? Okay, Mr. Toomey.
Okay. I'm presenting to the town of Hamilton the results of our work in the past year. The Hamilton Town Hall Committee was put together by the selectmen to develop alternatives for the repair and remodeling of the town hall, the town hall being one of our most significant buildings in Hamilton. For well over a hundred years, the town hall has seen many uses and has managed to meet the needs of the town with many, many updates and reconfigurations taking place. Space has been an issue since the twenties, 1920s, and has been a source of debate at many town meetings. Multiple attempts to use the basement. We've used the stage for many different purposes. You've heard some of them today. The Great Hall now is used for office space, and people and staff have managed to make this work. The last town meeting that was held in the Great Hall in the town hall was in 1953. The town hall has been used as a library, meeting rooms for organizations and committees. It's been a schoolhouse, a police station, a welfare office, childcare in the basement, a home for the Historical Society, Civil Defense Center. It's been used for dances, whiz clubs, high school graduations, weekly socials, plays, basketball courts. It's been used for voting. It's been a jail cell for vagrants and tramps. It even has a window in it with no bars, believe it or not, in the jail cell. In 1942, it was a temporary home for the Ohio National Guard. The sleeping quarters were on the second floor. Their cooking and storage was in the basement. The trucks and equipment were out in the DPW yard, and it was later assumed that the two holes that are in the eagle came from one of their marksmen. That's a little bit of a history on the town hall. Let's see. The Kubla is just, it's in pieces. It's ready to fall down. Let's see, and next to it, the ramp. In 1988, an attempt was made to appropriate money for a handicap ramp, and it was not funded. Following year, similar proposal was voted, that was not funded either. In 1990, all the public meetings were banned from the town hall because of lack of access for the handicap, and the high school was used as a meeting space for all meetings. In 1992, George Ricker and a group of volunteers put together a ramp, and it was supposed to be modified within three years, which it wasn't. They did some minor changes to it, but we never lived up to the agreement that we originally had. I'm trying to be brief here, there's so much information, I will try to condense this. It was built in 1898. They actually started construction in 1897. It is in the Historic District, and it's registered in the National Registry of Historic Places. I won't go through all these people, but it's important, we're getting feedback. These committee members are accessible. We need to get input from the town. The next is, let's see. Hold on just a second here. To meet mass laws for larger projects in August 22, 2018, we hired design techniques, they're the owner's project manager. Their role initially was to assist in the procurement of the architect for the project, which they did, and they had good results. On November 7, 2018, we selected and hired LLB architects of Pottucket, Rhode Island, for the conceptual design phase. In addition to providing different concepts in record time, we used the consultants for testing structural, mechanical, electrical conditions, also test pourings and hazardous materials, testings for asbestos, radon, and lead. They are to be recommended for their quick response and patience in dealing with this. Let's see. Building code issues, emergency egress, automatic sprinkler system is nonexistent. This is a building that's just, it's not going to survive a fire. We need a fire suppression system there. Guardrails are missing at the ramps, stairs are not compliant, the mezzanine is not compliant. Bathrooms are not handicapped accessible. The second floor is not handicapped accessible, and it doesn't have a bathroom. The basement level is not handicapped accessible, and the doors are not at the right clearances. So, why do we need a renovation? It's cluttered, there's poor circulation, there's noise, very little meeting space, and we don't meet any of the right current codes. It's just not compliant. Our first order of business, being the structural integrity of the building, appears to be favorable for what we're doing. There are no major deficiencies in the structure. Soil's testings, they support spread footings if we were to add, which is very favorable. Radon testing is below normal levels, asbestos is limited to a few areas of caulking and small miscellaneous areas. Lead was found throughout the building, appears to be limited to the paint and the trim. There is no exterior lead in the ground from previous scraping issues. Throughout each phase, we looked at the mechanical, the electrical, the fire suppression, handicap, every conceivable deficiency, we've worked on. Space planning, this was really the first step. LLB architects did a programming exercise to evaluate space requirements for each employee and department while keeping an eye on the future requirements and needs of the town. I will try to be brief. We have eight options here, and I don't expect everybody to fully understand all the little parts and pieces, but the first one is a 3,000-foot addition on the back of the town hall. The next one, number two, let's see if you go to the next slide.
While you're working on that, I can just... Yeah, go ahead with it. If you don't need to, go ahead.
I'm trying to abbreviate this, I'm going, so it's getting a little confusing here. But the first option was a 3,000-square-foot addition on the back. The next option was a 6,000-square-foot option. The third option was a 17,000-square-foot option. This is where we said, we're going to stop building, we're trying to contain this building without adding, adding, adding. The fourth option was no addition, but uses the basement for a 46-person meeting space and putting all the offices up in the Great Hall. The fifth was no addition, but uses the basement for office space. That could take it off the table. 18,000 square foot, small addition off the back for stairs and an elevator only. The seventh was to build a structural third floor, so what we'd actually do is we'd do an interstitial floor between the second floor and the roof. That has its merits, and it also has its issues, one being the elevator would now protrude above the roof, and we'd have to make a doghouse up there. The Historical Society would have something to say about that. The eighth one was no addition, but take... The eighth one was no addition, but takes out the double staircase. The ornamental, historical piece of that building would be removed, and we'd be putting a floor and adding offices. The conference room would be a 78-person conference room on the second floor. That's the eight options. The one we keyed on is number eight. It's the most cost-effective. We have looked at taking several different passes at this. Nothing is cast in stone, so we're still looking for input from the town. What makes this work, it's very, it's still tight, but it requires a paperless initiative to make, and all the office spaces would be limited to how much storage they could use. The basement will still be used for storage. We did look at future needs, also parking. Tim Olson, our DPW Director, has looked at expanding space parking, or parking space in the rear. Let's see.
Are you almost done?
I'm almost done. I'm trying to be...
All right, I understand. There's a lot.
There's a lot. Why don't we go right to the costs? That's probably the best place to be. That's what everybody wants to know. If you continue. Just back up just briefly. Back up two, please, if possible. This would, this is a couple of profiles of the second-floor meeting space. We have the rotunda ceiling still. We've split that second floor in half, the right half being the new Selectmen's meeting area. The left half would be the DPW Department. Go to the next slide. This would be the larger Selectmen's meeting room. It'd be configured a little differently, and I believe it's 78 people. That's what we were asked to set it up for. The next slide is the cost. We're looking at, this is what we consider the most cost-effective, $8,583,000. That's hard and soft costs. This is only a budget. This is based on conceptual drawings. We still need input from the town. There's a lot of moving parts. This does include escalation fees, design and consultant contingencies, relocation costs, off-site rental costs, furniture allowances, and money for the paperless initiative. Next. We have a schedule. Our plans are to get input and solidify one design, move into the schematic and design phase over the spring and summer, and this fall meeting have an updated budget and design. And we propose getting funding to get into this construction document and bidding phase for the spring meeting, spring 2020. And we would be there with finalized drawings and hard construction pricing, looking for a budget to go forward. We would be able to break ground July 2020, and it would be about a 16- to 18-month project.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Doug Treys, again, five, five second.
Make sure you speak right into that, so people can hear you, Doug.
Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. This project is around 12,000 square feet without the mezzanine. Is that about right?
That's correct.
This eight and a half million dollars is $650 a square foot.
Speak right into the microphone. You have to get right next to it.
The point is that this project at eight and a half million dollars for 12,000 square feet is $650 a square foot. In my opinion, this is an outrageous number, and I would just urge the town to look at two things together, the Town Hall issue and the Patton Homestead. We have empty space at the Patton Homestead, needing a lot of money to get it usable, and we have this building with a very high estimated cost.
All right, any other discussion? If you'd like to, come on down.
I grew up in Gloucester, Massachusetts. Steve Dexter, Steve Dexter...
Sir, sir, could you state your name and address, please?
That's what I'm saying.
Oh, yes, sir.
Steve Dexter, Eight Honeysuckle Road, South Hamilton. I grew up in Gloucester, and my wife and I moved to Hamilton for the educational system, quite honestly. And, but I run a business in Gloucester, and the business started in 1867. And so, City Hall, discussion came up in 2004 about abandoning the City Hall. Carry it down. I don't know if you've been to Gloucester, but it's quite a building. And so, I got assigned to the committee with several other people, and we looked into it, and we're sitting in the Town Hall, and the tower was 19 inches out of center, ready to collapse. So, a lot of cell politicians in town said, ah, let's abandon it. Let's go to a park, industrial park, and run the city there. We didn't do it. We would not do it. We refused to let the town fathers do it. And we had a lot of storage problems in the City Hall, but the City Hall Restoration Commission was in charge of the building. So we said, what are we going to do about all these files and everything that are stored in the building? And we, I contacted the post office. My wife's cousin was kind of a big shot in the post office at one time, and I called him and said, what about storage in the post office? He said, I'll call you back in 15 to 20 minutes, because the post office is trying to be friendly to the towns. And they said, yep, you can store all the loose files and everything in the lower level of the post office, free, no charge. So anyway, we've had a commission that started in 2004. We meet every Monday morning at 10 o'clock, and people who are against staying in the building love it. We have people who come in the community that love the building. And so, I am strongly in favor of keeping this, restoring the building. I sent Joe some stuff probably a year ago. It was a town, I'll finish up. It was Kingston, New York. They abandoned their Town Hall. 10 years after that, they went back and said, we made a big mistake. We ought to restore our historical building, go back to the Town Hall, and that's what they did.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Oh, yes, sir.
I'd like to respond to the cost issue.
Yep, just briefly, yeah.
We looked at putting together just the hard costs, and that was an appropriate way to present this. We've taken the hard and soft costs. We've taken all of the moving costs, the paperless initiative, every possible financial impact to this project, and we've put that together. So when you say $650 a square foot, it is high. There is still 20% of contingency in there for design and construction. There are a lot of things built into it. My job for 40 years was to keep in the architects as cost-efficient as possible. That's what I did for a living. I intend to do that here. The costs are going down. In my mind, any way we can, we're going to cut costs. We've already cut an incredible amount of money out of this just to get it to the 8.5. That's what we're tasked to do, and that's what we intend to do.
Thank you. All right, ready for a vote? All those in favor, please raise your voting cards. Thank you. All those against, please raise your voting cards. The motion passes. Onto Article 3-1, to see if the town will amend the zoning bylaws, Section 6.3 signs by deleting the current text and replacing it with the text set forth in Appendix F to the 2019 Appendix Book, or take any action thereon or relative thereto. Recognize Brian Stein.
I move that the town amend the zoning bylaw, Section 6.3, quote-unquote, signs by deleting the current text and replacing it with the text set forth in Appendix F to the 2019 Warrant Book.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Stein, Chairman of the Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is essentially a cleanup of this article, or this bylaw. It's our current sign bylaw. The current text reads that any sign, temporary or permanent, needs a permit. Obviously, no one does that for temporary signs. We just need to clean this up. Permanent signs will still require a permit from the building inspector. Temporary signs, however, that's really the change here, is we're suggesting that two temporary signs per property for two months max before an event, and then have to be taken down very shortly thereafter. Political signs, however, you're allowed to have five during election season and must be removed one week after the election. And real estate signs are exempt from those timeframes. So it's really a minor cleanup of this bylaw.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your voting cards. Thank you. All those against, please raise your voting cards. The motion passes by a two-thirds vote. All right, Article 3-2, to see if the town will amend the zoning bylaw, Sections 8.3, Inclusionary Housing, by revising the text as set forth in Appendix G to the 2019 Appendix Book, or take any action thereon or relative thereto. Mr. Stein.
I move that the town amend the zoning bylaw, Section 8.3, quote, Inclusionary Housing, unquote, by revising the text as set forth in Appendix G to the 2019 Appendix Book.
Is there a second? All right, discussion, Mr. Stein.
Again, this is a minor amendment to the Inclusionary Housing bylaw. Real quick, the Inclusionary Housing comes into play when there's a development of 10 or more units. After that 10th unit, that next unit has to be an affordable unit, and then every 7th unit thereafter is required to be an affordable unit. And there's a few different ways a developer can meet the requirements of that unit. One being providing a unit off-site, providing a unit onsite, or providing a cash contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust. And this adds a definition to clarify what area median income is, as we don't have it currently. And the payment in lieu of a unit is based on the area median income. And we're also amending the cash payment option to be, to go from two times the area median income to three times the area median income, which would make the cost of a, you know, a unit or the cash payment option approximately $276,000 from the current $146,000. So essentially, every unit that a developer does not provide onsite and wants to do a payment in lieu of would be approximately $276,000. It's still not the cost of really building a unit anymore, but it gets us much, much closer to that from where we had been in the past.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your voting cards. Thank you. All opposed, please raise your voting cards. The motion carries by a two-thirds vote. Onto 3-3, to see if the town will amend the zoning bylaw by renumbering the current Section 7.3 Wind Energy Facilities as Section 7.4 and inserting a new Section 7.3 Small Wireless Facilities in Public and Private Rights of Way and Upon Public and Private Property with the text set forth in Appendix H to the 2019 Appendix Book, or take any action thereon or relative thereto, or take any action, oh, that's in there twice. Never mind. Recognize Mr. Stein.
I move that the town amend the zoning bylaw by renumbering the current Section 7.3, quote, Wind Energy Facilities, unquote, as Section 7.4, and inserting a new Section 7.3 Small Wireless Facilities with the text set forth in Appendix H to the 2019 Appendix Book.
Is there a second? All right, discussion, Mr. Stein.
We're adding this bylaw to address the relatively new cell, small wireless cellular facilities that have started to pop up in various areas. We had one pop up recently in town. They pulled the permit, or they pulled the application before anything happened, but these will be coming down the road fairly quickly, and we needed a bylaw to be able to regulate these and to allow the planning board to review them, review the placement of them, review the aesthetics of them, height, so forth. There's really not a way to stop these, just like there really isn't for a cell tower. This is, these are really coming out and, you know, given that 5G is now starting to unroll from various carriers, these, you've probably already seen in other towns, they're going on top of telephone poles. They're probably the size of a, you know, water jug, a few feet high. They can also be on their own separate poles, but we just needed a way to define what they are and also to give the planning board review authority over them.
Thank you. Seeing no one else. All right, ready for a vote? This requires a two-third majority. All those in favor, please raise your voting cards. Thank you. All those against, please raise your voting cards. The motion passes by a two-thirds majority. All right, Article 4-1, to see if the town will amend the zoning bylaws, Chapter XXXII, Hamilton Affordable Housing Trust, by striking the current language of Sections 3 and 7 and substituting thereon the language set forth in Appendix I of the 2019 Warrant Book, or take any action thereon or relative thereto. Recognize Bill Olson, Selectmen.
I move that the town amend the town bylaw, Chapter 32, Hamilton Affordable Housing Trust, by striking the current language of Sections 3 and 7 and substituting therefore the language set forth in Appendix 1 of the 2019 Warrant Book.
Is there a second? Discussion, Mr. Olson.
So, we're basically looking to make two small changes, but it will be significant improvements. So currently, the Hamilton Affordable Housing Trust mission is to promote and increase affordable housing in Hamilton, but the makeup of the trust currently is five voting members, where three of them are appointed by the Selectmen, one is the Selectman, and one is the Town Manager. Seeing as though the Town Manager is an employee of the town, does not need to be a resident of the town, we felt better to have all five members be residents of the town. So we're seeking to change it to be, the Town Manager would be an advisory member of the committee, but not a voting member. So we would add one additional volunteer that would be appointed by the Selectmen. So the new makeup would be Selectmen and four members of the community. The second change is to change the quorum. Currently, our quorum is four, meaning four people need to be at each meeting out of the five. But as it's only a five-member board, we're changing that quorum to three, which would be more typical. We looked at other towns in the surrounding area, and this better models what other towns are doing to form their Affordable Housing Trust.
Thank you. Seeing no one at the microphones, ready for a vote? Those in favor, please raise your voting cards. Thank you. And those against the motion, please raise your voting cards. The motion passes. Article 5-1, to see if the town will accept the provisions of Section 20 of Chapter 32B of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended by Section 15 of Chapter 218 of the Acts of 2016, establishing another Post Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund to authorize the Board of Selectmen and Treasurer to execute a declaration of trust, creating an expendable trust for the purpose of holding monies appropriate to such fund, designate the treasurer of the trust, of such trust, to authorize the transfer of any and all monies currently held for the purpose of paying retiree health and life benefits to such trust, and to authorize the trustees to invest and reinvest the monies pursuant to the prudent investor rule of generalized Chapter 203(c), Sections 1 through 11, or otherwise as permitted by law, or take any other action thereon or relative thereto. Recognize David Wanger of the Pinpoint.
I move what he said. Pardon me, sir. I move that the town accept the provisions of Section 20... I move that the town accept the provisions of section twenty of chapter thirty-two B of the Massachusetts General Laws, as amended by section fifteen of chapter two-one-eight of the Acts of two thousand and sixteen, establishing another Post Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund, to authorize the Board of Selectmen and Treasurer to execute a declaration of trust, creating an expendable trust for the purpose of holding monies appropriate to such fund, to designate the treasurer as a trustee of such trust, to authorize the transfer of any and all monies such trust.
Monies currently held.
I'm sorry, I've lost my place.
Sorry.
Trustees, to authorize the transfer of any and all monies currently held for the purpose of paying retiree health and life benefits to such trust, and to authorize the trustee to invest and reinvest the monies pursuant to the quote-prudent investor rule unquote of GL, chapter two-oh-three-C, sections one through eleven, or otherwise as permitted by law.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Wanger.
Thank you, sir. We currently have a bit over five hundred thousand accumulated toward an ultimate liability of over seven million. Seven-point-seven million is the estimate. Those funds are intended to pay the OPEB liability, that's seven-point-seven million, to retirees. We thought it prudent to use the most available legal means to ensure that those funds, as they build, enticing as they may be for other uses, to remain devoted to the purpose of the retirement benefits. The law that we recommend you accept allows us to, the Board of Selectmen, to create an irrevocable trust, to ensure to the highest legal degree the retention of those monies for their stated purpose. Thank you.
All right, I see no one at the microphones, ready for a vote? All those in favor, please raise your voting cards. Thank you. All those against, please, please, please raise your voting cards. The motion passes. This meeting is recessed until seven AM on April eleventh, two thousand and nineteen. Thank you so much for coming, and please, if you could remember to take your trash with you, to help the people who'd otherwise have to pick it up. Have a nice day, and there's a bake sale outside, okay?
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah.
On behalf of the town, I'd like to thank you very much for serving as moderator for the last few very difficult town meetings, you've done a fantastic job, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Keep it.
Congratulations. Thank you.